Good morning, welcome to the session of the Anne Arundel County Council. It is Tuesday, April thirteenth and nine AM sharp. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard. Ms. Pickard is not yet joined. Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski. Mr. Pruski has not yet joined. Ms. Feebler.
Present.
Ms. Rodvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard, I see you've joined. Do you want to check in?
Present.
Linda Shewett, Legislative Council.
Present.
Michelle Boleyer, County Auditor.
Present.
Madam Secretary, we have six council members present. We have our Legislative Council and our county auditor. We are ready to begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This morning, and we are going to roll into our first presentation of the morning. We have the fiscal year twenty annual audit. Clifton Larson and Alan Elope.
Good morning. I think that's my cue.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Remy Elmasor. I'm also here with Alex Walthier from CLA as well. And I've got a brief presentation that I want to work through for the council. Thank you, Laura, for bringing that up. So I'll go through this fairly brief. I should start by saying we issued the opinion on the financial statements of the county back in December. Typical and a non-COVID year, we're always shooting for the December thirty-first year end, which is best practice as well as in state statute that counties in the state of Maryland issue their reports. With COVID, there was, in the pandemic, I should say, there were some deadlines extended, but as I mentioned from that December date, we were well ahead of those new requirements, deadlines, and issued our plan in accordance with our pre-COVID audit plan. So again, I always have to thank Karen and her team, as well as Michelle and her team for working through us to get the financial statements issued. So starting on page two there of the contents of the report today, I'm going to work through, just talk a little bit about our scope and deliverables, what we did, go through some required communications, and then lastly, leave you with some trends that are coming through in the future for FY twenty twenty-one and beyond, some things that we just want to bring to your attention as they're going to result in financial statement changes through the next couple of years. If you could go to page three. So in regards to, and skip ahead one page. Thank you very much. In regards to scope and deliverables, we were engaged to audit the financial statements of the county. Included in those financial statements are the activity of the health, retiree health benefits trust, the OPEP plan, as well as the retirement and pension system, the pension plan. Those balances and note disclosures are included in the financial statements of the county. In conjunction with that audit, we also do the single audit or the uniform grant audit, which is the audit of schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Basically, federal dollars that we get that are expended by the county. Now, as you go through auditing standards, require me to tell you that the financial statements are management's. They go through, prepare the financial statements. We go through as external auditors to performing procedures to express an opinion on those financial statements. Basically, to say that the numbers and disclosures in the financial statements are consistent with actual performance and the balances as of year end are within a material number. The county puts the financial statements on their website, so it's open for public consumption if you want to go through. Having trouble sleeping, or if you just need to come down, feel free to read through the three hundred or so pages and disclosures that we have there. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can give on a set of financial statements. Also, as a part of our firm best practices, we issue what we call a required communication to governance. It basically goes through and talks a little bit about the audit process. I'll be talking about the majority of those things today. In conjunction, we also issue a report on internal controls and compliance in regards to the CIFA. As of today, all the requirements and the scope that I talked about above has been issued with the exception of the single audit or the audit of schedule of expenditures of federal awards. That deadline is typically three thirty-one, as you can imagine, and has been the talk of the town. So if you have in the governmental arena, a lot of our clients, states and local governments have been receiving what we call the CRF or Corona virus relief fund. Billion or so dollars that was enacted in the CARES legislation that went out to local governments. The county did receive a bulk of those funds or a good portion of those funds. With that being said, the audit guidance did not come out until late December. Nationally, they pushed the deadline back from three thirty-one to June thirtieth, and then they just pushed it back again to September. So that report is not due yet. We're tracking to be done by that initial extension, which is June thirtieth. But that audit is currently in process, and the bulk of what we have outstanding is related to that CRF program that we're currently conducting the audit on. The next slide here just talks about some of the required communications that we give from the financial statement perspective. And that is to say that we issue an opinion on financial statements. That opinion gives you reasonable, not absolute assurance. Basically, we go through and take a look at the disclosures, the numbers in the financial statements and the processes that go into preparing the financial statements to make sure they're sound. However, we do not audit a hundred percent of all activity. When we go through and select those items for testing, we do it on a risk-based approach. Basically, focused in our time on the areas of the highest risk. So as we go through from a judgment perspective, from a disclosure perspective, that's how we perform our audit plan. As you go through the financial statements, we also have to inform you when we do not audit in the balances of the financial statements. The county has the Tipton Airport Authority, which are included. Relatively small numbers in the financial statements, but those audits are conducted by other auditors and we modify or basically say, hey, if you want to go take a look at those numbers and take a look at that audit process, we defer to those auditors and their communications. The next slide here just talks a little bit about the ins and outs of the financial statements. So as you go through and take a look at the financial statements, we always point you to what we say is Note One, which is the responsibilities and the elections of the disclosures and the accounting policies that have been selected by the county. There were no significant changes from last year to this year as you go through and review. So it is a fair, if you want to do comparison from last year to this year's activity. And then aside from the significant dollars pouring in with the federal programs, there were no unusual transactions. I mentioned some audit guidance came out in late December. This year has been one of change and pivoting, so in regards to all the federal programs, we, our firm does a pretty good job of staying in communications with regulators to make sure we have a good understanding of what they're expecting and what they determine are significant from a compliance standpoint. And then we tailor our audit procedures to make sure that we hit those items. And will you skip forward to the next slide there, please, Laura? Also, as you go through, one of the things we like to highlight is significant accounting estimates. So if you go through the financial statements of the counties, we've highlighted some of the larger ones there. Uncollectible receivables, fair value of investments, landfill post-closure costs, OPEB and net pension liabilities. Again, I always like to say some items are easier to audit than others, i.e. cash. You can take a look at a bank statement, talk to the bankers to confirm what that balance is. For things like OPEB and pension liability, it requires management assumptions. Things like the mortality rates for individuals, return rates for assets that we have accumulated in trust. So some of those things could be manipulated or moved based off management bias. So we do a fair amount of procedures to make sure that those assumptions that go into those estimates are reasonable. We compare them with other counties in Maryland. We also compare them across the country in regards to investment returns to make sure that they are consistent. Also, in the notes of the financial statements, there is a ten-year trend with those returns would be. We always like to point management and governance to those disclosures because they give you a good sense of, you know, what are our assumptions and then what were the actuals over the last couple of years. Also, we like to say if there were issues or if we encountered any issues during the audit, we would reach out to governance while they happened. We also summarize that up in the end, basically to say that we did not encounter any difficulties. Everything we asked for, Karen and her team provided. To our knowledge, there were no consultation with other auditors. And then again, there was nothing discussed with us being prior to being retained as the external auditors. So from a regulatory compliance standpoint, there was nothing out of the normal that I would have to bring to your attention. It was the typical, we came, we saw, we ordered for the clear term there. On the next slide here, wanted just to go through, I mentioned that we expressed an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, i.e. these would be findings, audit findings, weaknesses in term controls that we would have to bring to your attention. So all in all, unmodified opinion, no significant findings that we'd have to bring to your attention. There are a couple of things that we do just from a financial statement clarity perspective. Wanted to just say, hey, here are some key changes if you're comparing last year to this year. One is the, we issued about three hundred million of debt this year. Again, that went through the typical process with governance and management, so nothing out of the ordinary. But if you're comparing items that we say, hey, are significant enough to bring to your attention. We talked a lot about, or I talked a lot about the additional federal dollars that we received. The CRF was the biggest program that we had. We had about a hundred million in cash receipts and about fifty-eight million of that was unspent as of June thirtieth. So I know after year end, there was a significant programs that we put in place. But as of June thirtieth, those were the stats, if you will, on it. And then if you're going through from a revenue perspective, there was a tax increase that increased the revenue side of the house. So there's about fifty-five million dollars of property tax revenue if you're going through and comparing year over year. There was one misstatement we had that was a past adjustment. Again, this is one that we've had for the last two years in regards to a legal settlement that is not currently due, but has been agreed upon in nature. The accounting standards say whenever you have that agreement, you do accrue it. It is not a significant dollar amount, but we wanted to bring it to your attention that, you know, as of June thirtieth, we do have that potential settlement out there that we'll have to pay. But from a cash perspective, as of June thirtieth, that has not been paid from a financial statement perspective. The next slide talks a little bit about the upcoming GASBIs that are coming into effect. As you can see, for June thirty, twenty twenty, there were two standards. None of them had a significant impact on the financial statements of the county. Over the next two years, we have the biggest two that we think are going to have an impact. GASB eighty-four talks a little bit about fiduciary activities. The way I would summarize it to say is if you hold cash on behalf of any other entity aside from the county, those now have to be included on the fiduciary statement of net position. All that to say is that I know the management team are working through those standards now. And then, of course, when we come back and report to you on twenty twenty-one's activity, we can give you the debrief there. But overall, not a huge impact, but you may see one or two new items included on that statement. And then the biggest one that everyone's talking about is eighty-seven. That basically goes through and say, if you have anything that's structured as a lease, i.e. you have an agreement where you have to make a consistent amount of payments in the future, those numbers now need to be included on the balance sheet. So we will see a huge influx of liabilities is what we're anticipating across our state and local government clients. Things such as rental operations, if you rent a building, those numbers now need to be included on the balance sheets. Previously, they were included in the notes to the financial statements. So overall, that's what I wanted to convey to you. I would say that the talking points this year, of course, has really been in response to the pandemic, i.e. a lot of federal dollars coming into our state and local government client base. The county had about a hundred million of that. And on the other side of that, I would say the response in regards to still delivering services, bringing in IT procedures, having the folks pivot from accounting and management perspective. So we took a look at those things during our audit. So no news is good news from a finding and adjustment standpoint. But overall, unmodified opinion, pretty clean from our standpoint, and nothing out of the ordinary that I'd have to bring to the attention of the council today. With that being said, I will turn it over to any questions that you may have on the audit or audit process or financial statements.
Thank you. I guess before we go to questions, I should probably ask whether Madam Auditor has before we go to questions, and then Ms. McQuaid.
I'm Michelle Boleyer, County Auditor. I just want to thank Clifton Larson for the work and getting the report out on time, but I don't have anything to add at this point unless there are questions.
Ms. McQuaid.
Really nothing to add. You know, we have a good working relationship. I think it went well. It was interesting, you know, changing over to, you know, not really doing the audit onsite because that's what we're used to doing. So I think the team managed it really well, especially under these times. So we're very pleased with with the results. We do, you know, actually, including single audit, we do actually three separate annual reports, basically, the CAFR. So it's a lot of work and the team's done extremely well, and we appreciate all the relationship with CLA. So went very well.
Well, thank you all. Ms. Hare has a commentary question. Go ahead.
I do. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. A big thank you for performing this audit. I had just two quick questions. The first one, on the federal money that we received, did you all consider whether those dollars were spent in compliance with the requirements or was that outside the scope of your audit?
Nope. So that is within the scope. So that audit is currently being conducted, but we definitely take a look at it. I can tell you firm-wide and for the county itself, that CRF is getting a lot of attention. And we are giving it a lot of attention going through. The guidance was very vague, as you guys may know, in terms of what you can use it for, a lot of flexibility. So every audit is a little unique in regards to the intention of what the programs were meant for. So it has taken a little bit longer than the normal, but that is definitely within our scope. And when we finish that audit in June, we'll definitely come back with a report or summary of here's what we went through for that CRF audit.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. And then the second question is just, you mentioned that legal settlement of four point three million. Is that one legal settlement or was that a series of legal settlements?
Um, and I want to make sure I keep myself out of trouble. That is one legal settlement, and we disclose the, a highlight of that case in the notes, the financial statements. And I think I'll turn it over to management if they want to comment on it any further.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Trying to get them.
Oh, Ms. McQuaid.
Okay, sorry. I'm having computer issues this morning. I'm on my tablet. So an interesting morning. Anyway, yeah, that is disclosed under footnote seventeen, continued liabilities, B, a lawsuit. So that'll explain it a little bit more in detail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all very much that you've done and the reassurance you provide the county that it was done well. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
Our next presentation is about the police body worn camera program. We will have Chief Allen, and here's Mr. Barron. So I'll let you introduce everyone else you've brought with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to hand it right over to the chief and let her take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow council members. I hope everyone is well this morning. Thank you for inviting us to be here to provide here an overview of our body worn camera program and most recent updates. In the room with me this morning, I have the people who have been managing the oversight of this project. Captain Herbert Hassan Push, Mr. Derek Matthews, and from the Office of Information Technology, Ms. Deborah Judy. They've worked very diligently in developing and I'm sorry, implementation of this program. We're very excited. We're on schedule. So they will walk you through a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then we will take any questions that you may have. One of the things that is not addressed in the PowerPoint presentation, I'll just put that out there right now. They have already conducted four community conversations around this program. And there's another town hall that's scheduled for May with the county executive, May four, tentatively, that could change, but that's what we have for now on the schedule. In addition to the communications piece, our policy, you all should have a copy of it. If not, it's available. It's a draft policy available on our website. And in addition to the policy, you'll find a frequently asked questions page and a link or a hyperlink for anyone who has a comment or question or has any concern regarding the policy. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Derek Matthews, who will begin. And I would say just enjoy the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Can you all hear me? Just give me a thumbs up. Had some computer issues. Okay. Good morning, and thanks on behalf of the team for us getting a couple of minutes to give you a brief overview. The chief highlighted some things that we'll actually give you a test run of when I get to the website, talk about the policy and the frequently asked questions. So that was a good segue. So we're going to give you a brief overview today of the body worn cameras. We're going to jump right into it. The body worn camera contract was initiated back in July of two thousand twenty. We went with the preferred vendor of Axon, who actually provides our TASER. So the TASER program along with the body worn camera will be technologically handled by Axon. So give you a rundown of the equipment and some of the technology that we're looking at. Each officer on the department will get two cameras. They'll have a camera that will always be on their uniform while on duty, and then there'll always be a backup camera. So in the event that there is, we'll talk about battery life and all of that, but in the event for some reason that they need to do a switch, there'll always be a secondary camera. Camera will have eight bay charging docks for a total of a hundred and seventeen. So if you look at the picture on the left, that's actually one of the mounts that hold the docks. So when the officers come into the station, all four district stations, to include headquarters, CID, and anywhere else that the officers come and go to do paperwork or start in their day, you will find these docks in those facilities for them to be able to put the cameras into those charging stations, which simultaneously will upload the information that that camera has collected into the cloud or into our evidence.com. Then we have single bay charging docks, we have a total of thirty-nine of those. So we'll have no issues with respect to making sure that the equipment is always ready to go. On the bottom right, you'll see an in-car signal unit, and we'll talk a little bit more about technology, but this unit simply allows the signals to transmit from the camera. So if the lights are activated on a vehicle, the three sixty's on the top of the car, this is what makes the camera activate. This is also what makes the camera activate should a weapon be unholstered or TASER be get ready to be deployed. The signal units is what makes the cameras click on. We'll talk more about the technology when I turn it over to the good captain. Deb? So here's what's kind of critical to the meeting today. The chief talked about us being on time. We're working diligently to make sure that we we hit our anticipated timelines. So I just gave you a quick update that we initiated the contract back in July of two thousand twenty. From September of twenty till present day, May into June, here's where we are right now. So we've, the building out of the infrastructure, which included the facility modifications. So for us to go into each district station or each facility and be able to put those docking stations required, the mounting required, the wire, the power sources, the backup power sources, et cetera. All of those modifications had to be made to each facility. And then, of course, there was the hiring of the resources, the people that will be one hundred percent guided and focused on dealing with the body worn camera program. That's the analyzing of the footage, the maintaining of the equipment. That entire staff needed to be hired. I believe we have, as I'm speaking to you right now, about four more people in queue. We expect them to be fully onboarded after backgrounds and interviews and the whole process by early June. Simultaneously, we had to get the vehicles modifications done to get those signal units in to be able to work in conjunction with the officers turning their lights on. And then, of course, we had to do the application and the configuration of the technology to make sure that it fit in conjunction with our policy that the chief mentioned. We're going to do our first testing. We're going to go down to our training academy, which is where our education process for everything that we deploy begins there at the academy. That'll begin in June. We'll do our first hundred officers. Those hundred officers will in turn be the train to trainers. So we're going to make sure that in-house we get our core of our super trainers done. And then we'll have the in-house ability to make sure that as we move forward, those officers can begin to help us train the rest of the rank and file. And mind you, that these cameras will be deployed and worn by, from the chief down. Everybody on the department will in fact be wearing a body cam. We're looking for the train to trainer process to begin sometime in July, along with when we actually deploy. And then full deployment, meaning every officer, every man and woman in blue by October of two thousand twenty-one will be officially trained and on the streets, ready to rock and roll with our body worn camera program. Deb? So I'm going to speak to some of the meat and potatoes, and I'm going to turn it over to the good captain, and we'll break some of the technology down. But one of the first and foremost things I always like to emphasize is these bullets here. So the body worn camera purposes and why we're moving in this direction, I think we can all agree that as we do our best to strengthen police accountability. We know that accountability is paramount right now in today's law enforcement. And from the chief down, we want to make sure that this department remains on top of being accountable for everything that happens within our police department. And, of course, one of the big things, too, we want to talk about briefly is promoting a de-escalation by both officers and the people that we encounter. So the use of the body worn camera works twofold. We're looking for that camera to promote the de-escalation. So we're hoping that when an officer engages an individual and says, you know, be mindful that this conversation is in that interaction is in fact being recorded, that on occasion that will kind of bring things down and de-escalate. And then as officers move about their daily business, the wearing of the camera hopefully will also promote the ability to quickly de-escalate things that they encounter. And simultaneously, we wanted to be able to resolve officer-involved incidents as well as complaints. So we're hoping that the cameras, just simple existence, will help some of the incidents that we deal with sometimes become a little more minimal, at least help us kind of maintain some level of keeping the numbers down. And on a complaint perspective, we're looking at some of the complaints that come in. These cameras will be able to tell an instant story and hopefully be able to resolve some of those complaints that we may get in the future. And then here's what I call the twenty-two thousand dollar word of the day. And then here's what I call the twenty-two thousand dollar word of the day, transparency. We want to make sure that we maintain our ability to be not only transparent as we are now, but to improve our transparency. Because this will give the public and you all as our elected official, the ability to see how far we're going with our level of transparency. And to be able to identify and correct internal agency training policies and issues. But be mindful that the policy and the body worn camera program is going to be a living program. So we've even adjusted as we speak policy. As the session concluded the other night, we had a piece of technology where we were holding footage as we talk about the technology for thirty seconds. We've already made the adjustment to make it go to sixty seconds, and we'll talk about what that means. And I'm giving you an example of how there's an evolution of change in law enforcement, and we're prepared to continue to make those changes. If you go back to how policing was done twenty-five years ago, when some of us started in law enforcement, some of the training and tactics have drastically changed since then. And we're looking for us to be able to continue that as we capture incidents and deal with complaints and deal with other training things that come along. We'll be able to adjust and adapt to those to those scenarios. And then as we kind of close this piece out, we want to make sure that we strengthen the officer's performance, safety. But overall, make sure that we increase the community safety. So we think that we've kind of hit everything that we needed to hit relative to the technology and what its purposes are. And then as I transition into the next piece of information, I'm going to turn it over to the captain. He's going to talk specifically about some of the technology and some of its limitations relative to the technology piece. And then I'll come right back to you. Captain?
Thank you, Derek. Good morning. My name is Herb Hassan Push. I'm a captain with the police department. I oversee our Technical Services Division. If you'd go to the next slide, please. So this seems kind of basic, but it's important to note what a body worn camera is. It's a point of view style recording system that's worn by law enforcement officers, and it does capture video and audio interactions. We also want to point out that the body worn camera system overall has limitations. For example, it doesn't necessarily capture everything that is occurring during an incident. The body worn cameras are going to be mounted high up on a person's uniform or outer, whatever they're wearing most on the outside. So it can it can see, but if an officer's head is turned, you know, the camera may be seeing something that the officer doesn't. So just want to point that out as a limitation. It's also does not record any kind of psychological physiological or biometric data of the officer that's wearing the camera. You know, it's not measuring heart rate, adrenaline levels or anything like that. It just doesn't capture that. It also cannot determine an officer's or anybody else that might be captured on the video or audio, their their state of mind. That only exists within that person and is not something that's recorded by the camera. I just want to point out that overall that the video and audio from the body worn camera alone also can't determine the officer's situational awareness and perception of what's taking place during an incident or interaction. It doesn't necessarily capture the information that the officer was given prior to responding to the call or prior to the camera being turned on. It may not determine what other people have told the officer or what the officer sees that the camera does not see. So we just wanted to point out and make everyone aware that there are these kinds of limitations to the body worn camera system. If you go into the next slide, slide, please. So some of the technology, as Derek mentioned, our vendor is Axon. And the Axon technology has some proprietary technology that we really like. Derek mentioned the camera trigger that's installed in the car. That's that little electronic thing that you saw on one of the first slides. And that's installed in all of our vehicles that have emergency equipment. So that under stress, an officer doesn't have to remember to activate their camera. They get the assistance from the signal device in the car. When the emergency lights go on, it sends a like a Bluetooth kind of signal to the camera and activates the camera into a recording mode without the officer having to do anything. There's similar technology on the taser. Since the taser is also an Axon device, they have the propriety connection between each other. When an officer turns on the taser, just powers it up, it sends a signal to the camera to automatically turn on. If they arc the taser, or if they pull the trigger on the taser to fire the taser, taser probes, it also sends that same signal to activate the camera. And then also we have a device that's going to be installed on the officer's holster, where it will detect if the firearm is is drawn from the holster. It'll also send a signal to the camera to automatically turn on so that under a stressful situation, the officer doesn't have to worry about saving their lives or somebody else's life and turn the camera on at the same time. It'll just be done automatically. And it'll also activate anybody else's camera that's within approximately thirty foot or so range of the officer that triggered one of these signal devices, so that multiple camera angles can be can be recorded if the if the cameras aren't already activated. Just some of the specifications with the configuration of the camera, as Derek mentioned. We had gone with best practices to have the camera constantly buffering for thirty seconds. What that means is that the camera, when it's turned on, it's always recording, but it's not actively recording. In other words, it's just it's constantly picking up thirty seconds of video, which we've reconfigured to sixty seconds based on the legislation that was passed. But it'll it buffers that time period and then just constantly re-records over itself. But then once the camera is activated, either by an officer manually activating it or by one of these signal devices, that sixty seconds of video is automatically appended to the front of the beginning of the video as soon as the cameras activated for audio and video recording. So it's designed to provide some context of what led up to the the camera being turned on turned on. The camera itself has a memory to hold about twenty-six hours of video before that video needs to be uploaded. The battery life without it being charged is about twelve to thirteen hours, which covers our shifts just fine. The officers will have the ability to charge their camera in the car if they need to through a USB type of charging cable. There's indicators on the camera that if the battery is getting low and they need to charge up the the camera or swap it out with their secondary camera at the station. Just some of the technical things, it records at seven twenty, high definition at thirty frames per second. It provides a very clear image. It's designed to to capture video that a human eye can see. It doesn't have night vision, although it's got low light sensitivity, so it records pretty well in low light. But it doesn't have like the infrared night vision kind of thing, and that's because the human eye can't see that. Our officers don't wear night vision equipment, so we want the camera to record reasonably what the human eye can see. Our camera system does have live streaming capability for critical incidents. It's permission based. So our supervisors will have the ability to live stream a camera if it's activated in recording mode. So if there's a critical critical incident and the command staff needs to make decisions on something, they'll be able to live stream cameras. It also has, it's not listed here, but also has GPS capability. So if the officers found themselves in the woods or something and they don't know exactly where they're at, we can see on a map where that camera is so that we can help locate the officers. That's a great officer safety feature. We received some questions about the video retention. In general, our baseline retention period is four years for all video. If a video recording ends up being part of a criminal investigation case or an internal investigation case or some other thing that we're investigating, it becomes in the system what's called a case. And that changes that automatic four-year retention period to indefinite until it's manually manually deleted by just a few people in our organization who will have the ability to do that, primarily our custodian of records and some folks in our Office of Professional Standards. And the retention will follow our normal retention periods for other evidence. It's interesting to know that the original video is never altered. Once it's recording, there's nothing anybody can do to manipulate it, change it. It is what it is. If we do get a request for to for a copy of the video and certain things have to be redacted to protect people's privacies. The original video is copied over and then we edit the video, like blurring out faces, license plates, maybe house numbers on the house so that people's privacy can be protected as might be required by the law. So but you should know that the original video can't be altered. Once it's recorded, there's no capability the officer has to to change it, edit, edit it, delete it or anything. If you go on the next slide, please. I'm going to turn it back over to Derek just to talk about some of the external communications that we've done, some community outreach things. You'll see the link to the Body One Camera website here. I don't think we can link to it since this is a PDF presentation. But if you want to go to the police department's main webpage, there's a banner that's pinned very easily. You can find the the webpage for the Body One Camera Program. It's got some great information on it. And I'll let the turn it back over to Derek to talk a little bit about that.
Thanks, Captain. Appreciate it. So in an effort to go back to that word transparency, here's a good example of of us moving forward on remaining with transparency. So press release initially went out on March the thirty-first announcing that Interola County Police Department webpage for the body worn camera was officially live. On that webpage, we outline the program, do a little bit about, little bit of what we've done today, kind of give you an overview of what the program is and why. We provided some of the most frequently asked questions. The chief alluded to that we've had several community meetings with some of the intimate intimate meetings with some of the focus groups or or local leaders, if you will. So we've been able to do that. We've actually added or or learned some things from some of the questions that we got from each one of those groups. Ergo, some of the information the captain just put out was some of the things that we've learned. We wanted to make sure that we enable feedback from the government, I mean, from the from the citizens, you all, as well as the constituents. We wanted to make sure that folks had the ability to look, see, touch and and provide us feedback. So I'm going to walk you through some of what I'm saying in real time and let you see what we're talking about. So Ms. Deborah is going to click the link that you all will have access to on the website as the captain mentioned. And you'll get a chance to see exactly what we're saying. So Deb?
Derek, I don't think we can click that link because it's a PDF.
Okay, so we will not be clicking the link today. So when we get off the phone, if we go back to that slide, just let me walk you through what you will see just to preempt it. So you'll get an opportunity to see the policy as it's currently residing, as the chief said. It's the version that we have now. It will reside there on the website for the next thirty days for public comment. You'll get an opportunity to see our press releases, our desires to have a press release. Okay, so she's showing you the policy and the there's a policy there. And that's the policy in its entirety. You'll be able to go through it and and see exactly what the officers have have will be based off of and how we will run the program. We will make sure that once a month, our battle rhythm here is going to be, we will push out a press release at a minimum of once a month. From our press information office, you'll be able to see should you or somehow on your busy schedules miss one of the press releases, they will reside right there on the website. Again, you'll have the frequently asked questions. You'll have the ability to go in and ask us questions. And we will monitor those questions here on the team. There'll be a central address. And we will collaborate together and make sure if it's something technically, something technological that has to be answered by Axon until we are up to speed with the level of technology as Axon and some of the OIT people. You'll be able to insert those comments and questions. And from there, sometime in early May, as the chief alluded to, those forms that we did will then turn into a single county executive town hall with the county executive in conjunction with the chief will be able to, for the entire public in its entirety, be able to do an actual town hall. I believe that will conclude the briefing at the thirty thousand foot level that we provided to the community. And now you all, as we continue to move forward. Here's just a brief picture of our high-speed officer Sergeant Cam Cook. Our press information officer showing you what one of the mounts look like at the district station. He is now about to insert the camera from his shirt into that docking station, which will in turn capture whatever was recorded on his shift and send that up to the cloud into evidence dot com. And just kind of giving you a picture of one of our stations that it's actually inside of. I want to thank you all for your time on behalf of the team. I'm going to turn it back over to our chief. Chief, we thank you for the time and and us having the opportunity to brief the council on where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, and everyone who was very much a part of this development. I neglected to acknowledge Mr. Rick Napa Latino, who tongue tied, Napa Latino, who is on the line with us as well. Oh, thank you, Rick, for your your work on this project as well. So with that, we'll take any questions that you may have. Mr. Pruski?
Yes, thank you. I didn't know if Madam Chair recognized the chief. Well, good morning, and thank you for the presentation, Andrew Pruski, District Four. You know, I know this presentation was set with body cameras, but this is about police reform and accountability. And and these cameras would have helped years ago when we had the Special Investigations Unit that misused under County Executive thing. So I I wanted to talk to you about that. You know, Chief Lowry was in the paper, Deputy Chief Lowry, Acting Chief Lowry at the time, talked about reforms. But it was never clear what those reforms were. I don't know, just quickly, can you highlight anything that has changed? I've had people request to me that they saw the article, but nothing was really kind of said. So I I don't know in terms of the internal forms, and and just to go back again, we had a prior county executive basically take the executive unit and use it for personal, you know, pieces. Of course, the court, I'm not here to relitigate. What I'm here is for the transparency in the public about what has been done to verify that that won't happen again with our officers about the unit and other things. And I don't know if you have any information related to that.
So I I'm just recalling from what happened in the article and speaking with the deputy chief at that time. There were internal processes within our Office of Professional Standards in terms of reporting who they reported to. And also, there was no standard operating procedure or guide that kind of gave them instruction as to how that unit would operate. So from what I recall, the department did implement a, one, the standard operating procedure, providing guidance for how they are to conduct themselves and to remain absent from political or personal favors. And then two, the reporting, directly reporting to the office of the chief and having a command officer placed in that position to oversee the operation.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Chair, we just want to follow up.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for that. So five years ago, a colleague and I got the body worn camera program in a resolution from the council that passed. We actually asked for this before the national conversation because we thought it was a great idea with transparency and accountability. But let me ask you, in particular, in my district, there's a personnel case, you know, obviously that we're dealing with, but even as the cameras, as cameras are being worn by officers. The liability and due process, I know we kind of talked about that policy and I'm going to read it further. But is there anything you can kind of count on? Because I know this is a big discussion with the state, right? There's due process of the officer and there's due process of the 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 folks that they're dealing with, right? I mean, this this is the way our legal system is set up. It's not one way or the other way, and it's set up for that reason that we follow these policies and procedures. But do you believe this this camera system based upon what was presented today? And thank you, Mr. Matthews. That was an excellent presentation with Captain Hassan Push. Do you how will this kind of push that, right? How will this make this better with the public and get that opportunity? Because again, situations that we see in life, we want to do better, right? One of the things that I appreciated about you in your interview, you said clearly to me that you would meet with the captains, you would meet with the public, and then make your position about moving the department in a way that reacts to that, right? We listen to what's on the ground, not only the officers, but the community that have been impacted by an interaction with an officer. And that's the way this should work, right? We make it better from where it was, and especially sometimes it takes a push of a national incident or things that happen. So again, I just want to give you an opportunity, you know, uh, you know, based upon, how do we go from here, right? We've had incidents, we've had other things, we're about transparency, accountability, uh this council fully supported the body cameras. Is there anything else that we need to do? Obviously, reforms, many of us have been reaching out state legislature, obviously that process has occurred, but again, I'll stop there and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
So when we talk about reforms and our staff is in the midst of going through all of the changes that are forthcoming, um things are changing drastically. Um there will be a police accountability board that will be appointed by um uh at least the chair by the county executive. Um there will be charging committees. It takes um those things that for complaints that are brought to their attention out of the hands of the police department um and into the hands of um people who are trained uh under the Maryland Police Training Commission um to receive complaints and to um review what will be a disciplinary matrix if discipline is required. They'll make the recommendation uh for discipline to the chief of police who will adhere to the disciplinary matrix. Um the chief of police, from my understanding, would still have the authority to either accept the discipline as it's received or elevate the discipline, um but to not deviate from from the matrix. Um in critical incidents, this um this new technology will help us tell a story that's untold. Um the video technology will provide that, and in critical incidents, you know, I will have the discretion to release those um videos to calm any concerns um that the community or our officers may have um to tell the story accurately, so that um it's not editorialized, but just presented factually. So those are just a couple of the things um that I think this technology, we welcome it, um we're excited about it and looking forward to its implementation um so that we do get to a point where um community trusts, you know, our decisions, our actions, our intent, our needs.
Uh Councilman Andrew Pruski, District Four, Chief, thank you so much. I appreciate for answering those questions. These are not always easy discussions. There's a lot changing, but thank you for for being upfront. And that's what I said, that's what we need to be when we talk to people about this conversation. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Ms. Pruski.
Now, uh Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um and thank you, Chief and Captain and Mr. Matthews for that presentation. Um I think that this is a um a program that the county and this body is ready to see implemented, so I appreciate the timeline being shared. Um transparency is one aspect of it, but I I mention this often and frequently when you sit in the seat of law enforcement and see firsthand the variety of scenarios when they arrive on scene. I think that this also helps the general public when those videos, if and when they are needed to be released. It it gives the general public an understanding of the circumstances that officers encounter when they arrive on the scene. So I'm looking forward to seeing those press releases. My question, though, is one of the slides touched on the trigger devices. What I want to understand is the off mechanism. So when the lights on the car go off or the taser goes back in the holster, I'm assuming the cameras still run, so there has to be an off mechanism. What is that? And how do we ensure that we're using the battery life to the best of its capabilities?
Yeah, you want to speak to technology? Yep. That that that's a great question. So the trigger devices do activate the camera. The trigger devices don't turn the camera back off. Um the, in many cases, the officer is going to be activating the camera manually anyway, and it's uh to activate it manually, they just tap tap twice on the, there's a big huge button on the front of the camera and it turns it on. Um and to turn it off when the event is over with, they uh simply hold that same button down and after three seconds or so, it it turns off. There's some uh vibration and and light indicators that the officer will see and hear um to know that the camera's either been activated to confirming that it's on recording and then also confirming that it's been turned off. And the cameras, when they're on duty, it's not off, it's just not actively recording. It's always on.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just ask a little question. Okay, thank you. Um so I'm assuming that that tapping will be part of the training so that officers get used to that procedure.
Yes, ma'am, it it uh it's certainly going to be a muscle memory thing, and that is a part of the training.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay, did everybody else see Mr. Volkey freeze? Okay, well then, um does anybody else have a question while we see if he can?
Okay, not, I guess I have a question. Um forgive me if this is answered somewhere in the materials that you've sent us, but um what batteries, as a follow-up to Ms. Fiedler's question, when the batteries have um run their useful life, uh need to be or entire units need to be replaced, or can batteries be swapped out?
We we have a program with the the contract we have with Axon um is a swapping uh program. So if there's some malfunction of the camera, whatever the malfunction is, um we let them know. We FedEx the camera back uh to them at the same time they're FedExing us a replacement camera. We also have a um a stock of about fifty or so cameras that'll just be available um for the quick replacement if an officer's camera has a malfunction like that. Um and then we'll just restock the uh camera when we get it from Axon, but uh our program that we have with Axon does provide for a real quick swapping out. Now, there's no, we're we're not taking apart the camera or anything like that to get into the battery. If the battery fails or becomes problematic, we're just sending the whole unit back and they're sending us a a new unit.
Good to know. I had one more question about that. I I did see in the presentation that the cameras do not record anything in terms of body officer, like the biometrics, um heart rate or um anything like that. Do they, do they have ability to to record or to obtain information about the the conditions, say the the conditions that might be relevant to uh, you know, to any any given stop or or incident sometimes when you draw them. And I'm just wondering whether that can be automatically done? Is that um a capability that or or not? That'll just be sort of something manual to be done if, when it becomes relevant?
I'm I'm sorry, you were broken up just a little bit, so I didn't get all of the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lots of folks at home using internet. Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, my my question is, I understand that the body did not record the biometrics of a police officer. Are they capable of recording in any other current environmental conditions that could become relevant about an it was raining at that time, or it was freezing, there was ice, or things like that?
Yeah, the the only thing that the camera records is audio and video. So there it doesn't pick up any other um data like that, like environmental conditions. It is, it will be um synced up to our computer aided dispatch system um so that if if uh the camera system, when the all the data is uploaded, it will look to our computer aided dispatch system and compare the officer, if the officer was on a call at that same moment the camera was recording, and will then add that data to the evidence management system so that it makes it easier to find videos. All the video, every video that's recorded has to be um categorized and then um titled so that we can refer to it if we need to again. So that's not an environmental thing, but um just wanted to explain that, that we do have some integration with our computer aided dispatch system so that we can marry and find um the videos related to the call that the officer was on.
No, that, thank you. That is helpful and a question, understanding how we can link different systems. So um that's very useful. I don't see um has rejoined us. So Ms. Corby?
Madam Chair, um first of all, I just want to note Mr. Pruski joined us as we are all well aware because he um added to the conversation. I just wanted to note that for the record, Mr. Volkey is having internet troubles. We're trying to help him out here to get him back in the meeting.
Okay, well, I think um he may need to his questions. Does anybody else have a question or or a comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Uh thank you all very much, Chief Fowler and Captain Hassan Bush and Mr. Matthews. Great to see you. Uh Mr. Napolitano, the work that you're doing to and have done to get this all set up. Everybody knows this is a really important priority uh that's in the county, and we're really grateful to see uh the good work that you're doing and making us move forward. So thank you for the present time. Have a great day.
Thank you to our team.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see ya. And with so uh go on to our bills, we will be discussing the GDP last, so it may seem a little on people, that's because it is on purpose. We're uh starting with bill number twenty seven, twenty one, which is an amendment. So, Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I hope it's it's just my internet, but I I missed it. Just to confirm, we're doing twenty seven twenty or twenty seven, twenty one, correct?
Twenty seven. Also, a recorder in my background. Uh there's a kindergarten, you're going through class and
Kindergarten, kinder kindergarten is downstairs in my house right now. Uh uh Pete Barron with the administration, joining me from uh the Department of Public Works is Mr. Beckier, Ms. Day and Ms. Henry from IMP. We have um Sir Africa from Finance, Ms. McQuade, and from Law, um Ms. Kenny. Um we are are bringing forward Bill twenty seven, twenty one uh related to permits for the use of county uh rights away. The current code provisions mandate that utility companies pay a deposit in advance to cover estimated permit and inspection fees. There are currently no fines assessed on companies which fail to pay those um fees uh on time. Um this has resulted in uh large outstanding balances of funds as companies will remain delinquent. The average delinquency at the time of this legislative request was fifty one days. Um this bill uh moves away from deposits in favor of quarterly billing and late payments are assessed a ten percent fine, similar to other utilities in the county. Um I I'll I'll let uh turn it over for questions, or if I missed anything, uh folks, especially at DPW, uh please feel free to jump in and anything, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? Any comments or questions? About this bill? Seeing none, hearing none? I, no hands or flags? Okay. We're good. Mr. Barron? So with that, we will go to twenty eight, twenty one, which is um Mr. Volkey in the bill. I still don't see Mr. Volkey, but Ms. Hare, I assume you can speak to the bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um I I jumped on as a co-sponsor to this bill because I it it improves transparency from my, from my reading of it at least. Um it's simply requiring a, an extra, I want to pull up the bill if I can, just so that I can quote from it directly. Um it requires developers before uh moving forward with any plan to um include a recording, I believe, of their um meetings and submit that with the the plan instead of just meeting minutes, um because so often what happens is people will say, oh, this wasn't included in the in the minutes, my comment wasn't included and things like that. So this just sort of um kind of gives that extra piece of transparency. Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um uh if we scroll down here, you can see the actual language. It just increases the the transparency for it. You can see there the added word is that they're just recording the meeting and submitting it uh to planning and zoning in addition to those meeting minutes that they typically attach. So I think this is just a a great way to make sure that all the information is always captured um and that everybody's working from the same playbook, so to speak.
Barron?
Uh thank you, uh Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. Um from our uh OPZ team, I have our director, Mr. Kai Ziegler, uh and and I think we have Greg Swain from Office of Law. Uh the the administration um appreciates the spirit of this bill. Uh I'll be honest with the sponsors, we haven't had a chance to dive too deep into it, but on its surface, it it looks like a really bill and and I anticipate the administration uh supporting it. We've been working on a number of transparency initiatives and it seems like another good add to uh the um those initiatives and I, um Mr. Kai Ziegler, feel free to throw something at me through the Zoom, but I think we're going to support.
Sure. Um good morning, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Um yeah, we've had some time in OPZ to look at the bill. Um I don't think we have any issues with it. What it really does is codify what we've attempted to do through a green notice on community meetings. The green notice is twenty eleven. It's about five pages long, so it's pretty complicated, but we're fine with the bill.
Okay, I have a question um for the sponsors. When you are, um I don't see anything in the bill specifying whether the record audio, visual, both, or is, you know, audio only fine? Do you um is find that that's, that would make it clear?
Uh Jessica Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. I think I heard, I'm not sure if it's my internet or or yours, but I think I heard you're curious if it's audio or video.
Yes.
Recording. Um so it doesn't say. From my perspective, I mean, given what you're listening for are the comments and the plans are separately available for review. From my perspective, audio is is sufficient. I'm certainly, I I can't speak for Mr. Volkey, but I'm certainly amenable to clarifying one way or the other if you think that that's an important piece to be included in the bill.
Mr. Volkey, glad to have you back. Did you want to say the bill and and to the chair's question as well?
Yeah, thank you. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Apologies that I lost you. I didn't realize which bill we were on. So um yeah, with this bill, uh again, what Councilwoman Hare said, I'm happy to clarify that as well, if if that's something that people think is necessary. My intention and what I had actually discussed with Ms. Schuett uh in putting this together is it might be better to leave a little bit of flexibility so that the sort of determination can be made as to audio or visual um recording by whoever is conducting the community meeting. I didn't want to put too specific of a parameter on it um so that you sort of impose like really high costs on the people conducting the meetings. But the intention is, I don't necessarily always believe that the meeting minutes accurately reflect what happens in the meeting. And so I would like to see this codified, like Mr. Kai Ziegler said, um in county code, that you have to keep a video and an audio recording of some sort, you know, whether it's video only, audio, video and audio, but just some way to independently verify that the notes, the comments that are being sent back to Office of Planning and Zoning do accurately reflect what the community felt in the meeting. So I apologize if I'm repeating anything that was said earlier um because I wasn't here.
Uh this is Sarah Lacy. I hope you can hear me. Um I would just suggest that in we would be better because it would set a floor for the kind of recording that's needed and the hosting the community meeting would know that an audio recording is sufficient if for whatever reason they didn't want to do it, couldn't do one, something about the cost or scheduling, whatever. But you can, um, an audio is easier to make and then provide that minimum safeguard, I think, that um you're looking for. Um I am somewhat concerned public's perspective. I don't know that everybody attending these meetings necessarily would want to be since, you know, if you've attended a contentious community meeting where neighbors are fighting in the community, they they're not going to want that recorded. I guess you can make arguments, hopefully you can still hear me um on both sides, but I think I would really like to see an amendment inserting audio in in there, um if that's amenable to you guys. I would really like to see an amendment inserting audio in, in there, if that's amenable to you guys. Ms. Schuett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Linda Schuett, Legislative Counsel for the County Council. This was a while ago, so I'm not sure my memory is perfect, but with one exception, I think the, the word "record" is used in various contexts already in the code without specifying what kind of recording it may be, whether it's audio or audio, visual. So, I, I think that's the reason why nothing, we did discuss the idea of inserting something, but there was some concern that by doing that, we might be, I don't know, just using the word "recording," which is the way it's done elsewhere, seemed to be, seemed to allow it to be open to the discretion of whoever it is, well, the developer recording it. So, but that, I will look, look at that again and make sure that what I just said is correct.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments? Seeing none? Okay, thank you all. To bill number twenty-nine, twenty-one, which is a county executive's bill. Tell us how we're going to manage our solid waste in twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one and beyond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration from DPW. I have Mr. Bowen joining us, if his audio got sorted. From OPZ, Mr. Kai Ziegler sticking around, and from Law, Ms. Kenny is joining us. So, bill twenty-nine, twenty-one amends the county's solid waste management plan as required by state law to acknowledge the proposed private waste processing facility, veteran compost in Lothian. This facility has been issued a compost facility permit by MDE. It's the Maryland Department of Environment, and the Lothian facility is planned to be sited at forty-nine-hundred Sands Road in Lothian, on the Sands Road Park property owned by the county. But with that, happy to answer any questions about this specific bill.
Ms. Hare? Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. My only question, I guess, for the administration is in terms of, as this is cited, has there been any sort of thoughts or conversations about potential adverse impacts to neighbors in that area? Or is it, I'm just curious, what, what has gone on in that fashion?
So, Pete Barron with the administration. It's a great question. I know DPW has been looking at that. I don't know if Mr. Bowen's audio is available, but maybe Mr. Kai Ziegler can maybe shed some light on it, or we'll just have to beg your forgiveness with technical problems right now, and we'll get you an actual detailed answer in writing after.
Good morning, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Actually, I'm gonna have to defer this back to DPWs. It's really, really their issue that are the driver on this.
Okay, no worries. An email after would be great. Thank you so much.
Any question? Specifically one that Mr. Kai Ziegler could answer? Okay, looks like not at this time. Thank you all. We will move on to bill number thirty, which is a co-sponsor between me and Ms. Rodgian. So, I guess this bill, this is a very, very simple bill. It's about four words that make a phrase, adult independent dwelling unit. And the idea that the type of unit that can be an adult independent AIDU can be independent of the underlying zoning. And that, so independent of the underlying zoning means that more flexibility for a developer who is building adult independent dwelling could be able to build to the market for those kinds of units. And that, that's going to allow, hopefully, more transition in housing to occur, because while we overall as a county support aging in place, overall as a county, we can't necessarily support aging in place home neighborhood across the county without building new housing. So, it's a need, and I think it's a good tool to have that flexibility. And so, Ms. Rodgian, I don't know if you wanted to add, otherwise I'll turn it over to Mr. Barron. Ms. Rodgian, you did want to say?
I just wanted to time in and say thank you. I thought that was a very thorough explanation, so I'll just leave it at that. I'm also having some internet works today. Apparently, it's, everyone's going around.
Mercury. I'm still blaming Mercury. Okay, Mr. Barron, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration from OPZ. Mr. Kai Ziegler appears to be on every bill today. We have Ms. Miller, also from OPZ, and Mr. Swain from Office of Law. I want to thank the sponsor for, for meeting and discussing this bill in advance. So, it'll, it'll come as no surprise. I think that the issues that Madam Chair outlined, the administration fully agrees with. We need to add more flexibility. We need to make sure we are able to build these kinds of units. I think the administration has some concerns about the way this bill is crafted. We want to get to the same endpoint, but the, the road we want to take may, may not be ideally in line, and the administration will be working on some comments that we can provide in writing for Madam Chair and the council's consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. My question is, I believe, for OPZ. If, if these are independent of underlying zoning, what does that mean for bulk regs? What's the guiding?
Ms. Miller?
Hi, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. The, the sponsor's bill is drafted now, does not have any impact on the bulk regs that are in the code, so the bulk regs that apply to the underlying zoning would still apply to the age-restricted units.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a busy day for all of us. Sorry if you can hear the power washing going on at my house. Hoping the windows are closed tight. So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit. We've talked a lot, especially over the course of the GDP and the land use map, about how we are going to need to bring flexibility into our zoning code to accommodate all of our goals. But I, and I think this is one of those things that the code has been interpreted for years in a certain way, and adhering to that, I think, is important. It does, there has been a precedent set around this issue. And dwelling type is different than density. So, when you think about aging in place, as Madam Chair and the sponsors of the bill discussed, you don't think of your two-acre lot with a large McMansion. You think about the cottage or the smaller home with the grab bars in the shower and things like that, which would afford people to retire and remain in the county. So, I look forward to supporting this bill in its best form and supporting the concept of flexibility in our zoning code when, as it relates to seniors.
Who else? Not seeing any. I hope I haven't missed a hand raise or something. Okay. With that, we will move on to resolution number twenty-four, twenty-one, which is also the Sarah Lacy Show right now. Sorry. This resolution is to state the council's, hopefully, opposition to the Baltimore-Washington superconducting MAGLEB as the SC MAGLEB, which will run between, or they would like it to run between Baltimore and Washington with ABY. And I tried to lay out all my concerns as I could in this resolution. So, I, instead of repeating all of those, I will defer, you know, answering any questions that anyone has. And I suppose the administration, I'll call on you as out of courtesy, but this is technically not your bag.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration, and you are correct. This is a statement of the council. I do have some information that maybe we can provide to the council. With me is, is Matt Johnston and Lori Rhodes from the executive side, from OPZ. Mr. Kai Ziegler from Transportation. We have Mr. Ramon Robinson from DPW. We have Mr. Phipps, and from Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. First of all, there are huge, huge transportation needs in this region and in this country, and the country is way behind other industrialized countries in our transit infrastructure. The, the final decision for where to allocate our limited transportation dollars on projects of this scale is done at a level way above the Anarundel County Council or the Anarundel County Executive. These are federal and state decisions. We can inform and provide feedback like the proposed resolution in front of this body now, but in the end, it isn't our decision. There is a federal process, and I, I don't want to get the process wrong, but the acronym is the NEPA Review. I think it's National Environmental Something. Somebody will know.
Protection.
Protection. The, the county's in the middle of our review of the draft environmental impact statement. So, so our, our comments are not quite done, and it's a little premature. This is a, a professional and, and technical review that we are committing, we are committed to making sure is, is done thoroughly. Those comments are due May twenty-fourth, and we are in the middle of our fact-finding and detailed review. There are a number of concerns with, with the proposed routes. There are several options. We are, we are looking at all of them, including the no-build option, and providing expert feedback to the decision-makers on this. So, happy to answer any questions about where that is in, in the process. Those county comments will be public when they are completed. But at this time, we, we have to refrain from commenting on where we, on exactly where we will land on any particular of the build or no-build options.
Thank you, Mr. Barron, and before further comments, that, one thing about the alignments, all the possible alignment, there are a total of thirteen options, including the no-build option. And since all thirteen of them include BWSI, all thirteen of them run through District One and impact communities in District One, including Harmond's on either side of the airport. And they also will impact Maryland City in District Four. You know, irreplaceable, or irreparable, irreparable? I, what, where's the IR? Damage. Damage in terms of things like, but there are, there are both environmental concerns as far as the destruction that will be occurring to forests in these areas, but also disturbance to marks and to communities. And in a sense, a way to, you could think of this as, and, you know, all, all routes going through Anarundel County. Well, that's not necessarily the best idea. And so, in, in that sense, I am, I'm bringing this because my, the communities I represent do, and to raise their, raise their voice, and that's why I need the council's support on this resolution. So, with that, I cut out. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Since I saw the resolution, I've been trying to do some digging on additional information. It does feel like there is a wealth of information that maybe this council, or at least I don't have. I sort of feel like there's so much in the resolution, and there's so, so many statements made that a lot more, I would like to know a lot more, because I'm hesitant to take a position one way or the other. For example, I'm trying to figure out, okay, it's going underground. What difference does that make in terms of how it impacts communities versus, I mean, all of this and the need for transportation? There's just a, a lot to consider. And I'm wondering if it's possible for the council to get some kind of briefing on it? I just feel like I'm not in a position to say yes or no, without having a much deeper understanding of exactly what it is we're looking to vote on.
This is Sarah Lacy, District One. The majority of the information in the resolution comes from the draft which is cited in the footnote on page one. And there are community groups that have put together presentations highlighting their points of opposition with the project. So, I can't, I can't promise that we could have a presentation necessarily. I can look into that. But I certainly can get you connected to them, to hear from them. I think Ms. Pickard had her flag.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D2, and just, I just wanted to add a few things. If and when this council passes this res- resolution, we will be very, we will be in very good company with Prince George's County. Their county council member, Councilmember Todd Turner, has been in touch with me a month ago or more, and couldn't believe that we hadn't taken a stand either way. I, I believe Council, County Executive Assal Brooks has come out against the MAGLEB. Having, up here in North County, you couldn't, you couldn't go through a community over the last three years without hearing or seeing signs in yards, you know, stop the MAGLEB. This is our, this is our third span of the Bay Bridge up here. You know, this state, we have lots of transportation needs, as Mr. Barron mentioned. And, you know, one of the most egregious things that's happened over the last few years is the stopping of the red line in Baltimore, which would actually, actually help commuters and connect people to jobs. This is not that. This is not what that train does, and it's kind of like, for lack of a better word, a bit of a boondoggle. If this country and if this state were way, way farther ahead in our transportation networks, a cool, superconductor's fast train would be really awesome, especially if you're into trains. This is not what that is. And we are so behind in connecting people to jobs and making walkable, sustainable communities. This is not where our infrastructure dollars should go, in my opinion, before we even get to offending communities in North County, because that's what it does. It permanently alters communities in North County, way more than even the land use map that we'll be debating later today. So, I'm a full, full, wholehearted yes on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Councilwoman Pickard, I'm glad that you mentioned the third span of the Bay Bridge. And Councilwoman Lacy, Madam Chair, I certainly understand representing a district where a massive transportation project could have long-term consequences. So, just for the record, I'm trying to catch up as much with this project as I know the third span of the Bay Bridge. I know they go through a similar state project, but I can certainly appreciate the position that you are in. And I have been reviewing potential resolution language. And I have been reviewing potential resolution language as well for the Fifth District. But where I am stuck is trying to catch up at a rapid pace with a different project that I'm not as familiar with. So, thank you.
Well, we have been busy, so. I, I was gonna call on Ms. Rad- I was-
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Radvian.
Can you hear me? Okay.
You all can't hear.
That I can stay connected. I, I just really want to reiterate what my colleague, Ms. Pickard, has already, Councilwoman Pickard has already said. You know, I, I love the idea of a really cool train connecting the, you know, the big cities on the East Coast. However, we actually have that. It may not be quite as fast, it may not be quite as fancy. And the idea of, you know, spending an enormous amount of money tearing up communities to maybe cut 15 minutes off of the, you know, the train commute between Baltimore and Washington DC, when we still have a 90-minute commute to get from Glen Burnie to Annapolis, which impacts far more people in our community. And if we could, you know, get some of that transportation and, and no, no disrespect to our transportation department. I know that they're advocating for these kinds of things, you know, as hard as they can and they're not, you know, they're not inexpensive. But I just feel like in terms of priorities, this, this is just, should not be a priority when we have such, as a state, as a county. We, as really as a country, I think we have much, much higher priorities in terms of transportation. And I hope the, the larger community can figure that out as well, we'll see that as well.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna have to go find my flag again. Pete Barron with the administration. Just to respond to a couple of the comments that were made. I think the administration would be happy to help provide some context. Both the, the Bay Bridge and this project are going through that federal process. But there are some nuances in how they have been done differently. And, and maybe Mr. Robinson is, is the right person to talk to it. We can also provide some background when our comments are done. I don't know if they will be done, I'm sorry, not some background, some briefing, if the council wishes, when, when our comments are done. I'm not sure they will be done in time for this resolution. Given that I think this comes up on the 19th and we don't expect our comments to be submitted until later in May. But we'd be happy to provide some additional background to any council member that, that was interested in, in sort of where the professional and technical analysis is coming down. But on the, the NEPA process, there are some differences between the two, but both are the Bay Bridge and the, the MAGLEB, but both are going through that process concurrently or currently.
Thank you, Ms. We need to take a break because we're supposed to do that at 10:30. So I'm gonna ask that we come back and then wrap up if somebody had any remaining questions before we move on to the G, which is the last thing on the agenda. Does that sound okay, Madam Secretary? I see a nod. Do you all back at 10:45? Madam Secretary?
Yes, Madam Chair.
At the time, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Mr. Volkey? Mr. Volkey's not yet rejoined us. Mr. Pruski?
Here.
Ms. Fiedler? Ms. Fiedler has not yet rejoined us. Ms. Radvian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Madam Legislative Counsel, Linda Schuett?
Present.
Madam County Auditor, Michelle Goleyer?
Present.
Ms. Lacy, we have enough present to proceed. We are still waiting on Mr. Volkey and Ms. Fiedler to rejoin us.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Were there any other to make about Resolution 3021? Add to Bill 1121, Plan 2040? I think you all had a chance to look at the folder that Ms. Schultz shared, which for us to kind of see how all the amendments that are proposed for the 19th are everything is grouped by sponsor. I think if possible, it's probably easiest to do these amendments by going down the list in a spreadsheet by sponsor. But I'm doing it a different way if that's what ends up making more sense. Mr. Barron, do you want to offer any? Did you get into specific amendments or did you want to start off the administration's amendments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I have the full GDP team here with me. We would, we would support going through these by sponsor. Our, our list is also organized by sponsor. Be happy to, to jump into it after we, we make a few comments. I think there's been a, a lot of discussion and the administration has, has fielded a number of questions from council members. And if, if it pleases the council, we would like to make a few comments at, at the beginning to sort of take some big picture stuff before we dive into specific amendments, if that's all right with you.
That's fine, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Barron. I just need to interrupt quickly here. We were prepared with amendments to do it the way we had done it last time, which was organized by subject matter. So we will need everybody's patience if we're gonna go through by sponsor. Just please use keywords for the amendment so that Ms. Schultz can bring up the right ones.
Okay, I think, I think we by sponsor, so we can pinpoint areas where, you know, there are ways of agreement versus some that need more discussion. Logistically, now it's probably as good as some logistics about Monday night. I don't know the total number of amendments that we're going to have on Monday night, but and I, I want to ensure that we can get all amendments heard. It's four hours to get through 44 amendments last week. We have more than 44 amendments for tonight. Luckily, none of the other legislation that is on for Monday night is, you know, due or it can hold at the subsequent meeting. So, you know, at most we have six hours. And in my mind, that means through, say, sixty-five or so amendments. We will need to be figuring out a way to bump depreciated if folks can kind of keep that in mind. Um, if we, we can find a way to work together to group then we're gonna be able to actually get through everything, but, but it's kind of dire consequences. If, you know, if we don't get through the amendments, uh, I just, I think none of us wants that to happen. Um, so and you wanted to go over the big picture. And so let's, let's do that now and then have opportunity for any responses from the council. We can go into specific amendments and I should add. Did anybody need to leave at a specific time that we need to be aware of to make sure we can accommodate whatever needs to be discussed? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um, I will have to leave briefly at eleven thirty, but we'll come back on a- after that if, if we're still going. So I just wanted to throw that out there, but I can be back about noon.
Mr. Pruski?
Yeah, Madam Chair, about noon is when I have to leave for a work appointment.
Okay.
Here until then.
Okay, thank you all. So, Mr. Barron, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron again with the administration. Happy on, on the bundling question. Administration is happy to, to work with the council. Um, and we'll try to be clear on, um, the discussion today on amendments that uh, we think are, are simple and easy and, and, and try to get most of the discussion out today uh, to hopefully facilitate, um, uh, getting through everything on the nineteenth. So with that, I, I'm gonna turn it over to our Deputy CAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes, uh, to talk at, at sort of the thirty thousand foot level about the GDP and, and take on a couple of the questions and comments we've had over the past several weeks, um, as, as we move through this process. So, Ms. Rhodes?
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Good morning, uh, Council Chair and Council Members. I hope I do, uh, the service of trying to explain this process from above. I mean, I've been monitoring the process. I've looked at prior plans. I've looked at, uh, regulations governing, governing comprehensive zoning and, and I kind of just wanted to give my overview of this process. Um, as you know, the comprehensive, uh, planning process is a rational process. It's preparing for the future. This plan serves as the overall policy guide for the region plans. It involves gathering and analysis of data, the examination of possible future trends, the consideration of alternative scenarios, some sort of analysis of cost and benefits of those scenarios, choosing a preferred scenario and a plan for implementation, because that's ultimately where we want to be. A comprehensive plan sets the broad goals, policies, and strategies for implementation. It should include all subject matter related to the physical development of a county such as land use, natural features, transportation, water and wastewater, parks and open space, growth management, et cetera. State law requires the preparation of comprehensive plans in Anaromel County. Comprehensive plans are principally land use policy documents that are advisory without the force of law. These plans should not be, uh, confused with plans set of regulatory. Um, and those plans are plans like the Odenton Town Plan where they set regulatory requirements for that plan. Um, I'm gonna talk about the role of what the professional planner is responsible for doing, uh, which is gathering all of this information to present to the council to consider, um, these broad goals, policies, and strategies um, for approving this plan. And some of the efforts that I've, I've heard and, and listened to and read in Plan twenty forty is what the, the professional planners have done. They, they've gathered the background data. They've analyzed and interpreted that data. They've communicated that data to the legislative body as well as the count, as, as well as the public. They organized and facilitated several meetings and other means of gathering information from citizens. Um, they compiled, organized, and analyzed comments from meetings. They have projected current trends and developing alternative scenarios to help the legislative body understand the implications of different decisions. Turning the policy decisions of the planning body into a plan document, making the plan document accessible and meaningful to the public, managing the process of public hearings, final amendments and adopting, preparing and publishing the final plan, answering questions of council members and the public about the plan, monitoring the plan and its implementation, and also reporting out on the progress. The things to consider among the kinds of decisions that a comprehensive plan will help guide you is providing the community with a context of proposed future land uses as well as information about the availability of future services to support these planned land uses. Decisions about expansion of major infrastructure such as sewer and water lines, new fire stations, and parks, and by indicating probable and or desirable future directions for growth in the community. The plan shows where infrastructure is most likely to be useful. Comprehensive plans require updates really for two reasons. First, uh, new circumstances may dictate change in the plan, and second, the community's goals may change. It is the council's prerogative to amend the plan. But keep in mind that the plan is broad. So it is certain, so certain terms that may not be included in the plan does not preclude this body from adopting legislation to address, uh, emerging land uses that may arise after the plan has been adopted. And moving on to the region plan process, this process integrates community engagement and technical analysis. It will follow the same steps as the GDP, but will be tailored to meet the unique needs of the region, which is spelled out in Plan twenty forty. It will begin with analysis of issues and existing conditions, plan for development to draft goals and policies, and update the planned land use map. Stakeholder advisory committees will participate in the process, and public hearings will be held on adoption of region plans and comprehensive rezoning. The region plan process was designated to, was actually designed to give more power to communities to have a say in the process. In the two thousand nine, uh, GDP, the small area plans were not, were essentially ignored. I mean, they weren't looked at. The community participated in that process, but they felt left out. So this process lets the communities weigh in. Therefore, it puts off decisions on comprehensive zoning to be considered as part of the region plan process. A region plan ought to represent the will of the community, which is made up of citizens. The council has the authority to adopt region plans and comprehensive rezoning. Therefore, all stakeholders with the goal to promote citizen, business, and county cooperation in the planning and development process. There's been discussion about consistency. Land use law regulation, uh, talks about consistency and it's referenced in several sections of the plan. In a broad sense, consistency refers to the relationship between planning and land use regulations. Jurisdictions that statutorily mandate planning frequently also require that the individual elements of the plan be consistent with one another. The Maryland Land Use Article Section one dash three oh two requires an action to be consistent with or have consistency with the comprehensive plan. The term shall mean an action that will further and not be contrary to policies, timing of implementation of the plan, timing of development, timing of rezoning, development patterns, land use, and densities and intensities. That's where consistency is coming from, actual, the land use article. In the end, land use changes that are adopted during the region plan process that are consistent with the current general development plan shall be considered amendments to the GDP. The processes are cyclical as determined by the county council, so this process will be iterative and continuous. And that's kind of how the comprehensive plan, region plan, and comprehensive zoning processes will continue on into the future with the goal of including the community in the process.
Mr. Barron?
Um, so we're happy to answer, Pete Barron with the administration, we're happy to answer any questions and, and go into any more detail based on, um, what you just heard from Ms. Rhodes, or if, if you prefer, we're happy to hop into, uh, the amendments.
I think you should go ahead with the amendments and any questions we have, we will address as they come along.
Works for us. Do we want to start with the admin amendments, if that's okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll wait till they pop up. So, um, this draft amendment, um, comes out of, uh, several of the discussions that happened at the previous council meeting and, uh, relates a little bit to, uh, the questions, um, that the administration has fielded from council members, uh, a, and, and the public about how the process works and what, um, plan to plan really means. Um, so, uh, this amendment, uh, so I think would be considered, um, related to the next amendment that we will be talking about, um, where we're, we're codifying, uh, the process. Uh, that amendment was the amendment that was not adopted at the previous council meeting, but we have uh, made some revisions to it. It was, uh, amendment number fifty-three at the previous council meeting. Um, so this describes in detail the comprehensive cyclical planning process that starts with this GDP, moves to region planning, and, and where communities will have the say in, the, the plan for their regions, um, the fine tuning of goals, policies, land use maps, and, and eventually culminating in the council's review and, and approval of the regional plans and, and on to comprehensive rezoning. And, and as Ms. Rhodes touched on, um, the, uh, this county has, has not set a regular, um, public engaged planning process. So what we are trying to do, uh, with Plan twenty forty is institutionalize a regular, ongoing cyclical planning process. And, and Ms. Schultz just shared the, the updated infographic that would go in, which we hope, provides a little bit more detail to those reading the plan about how this process would work. Happy to answer any questions, Ms. Rhodes, or, or, um, anybody, if, if you want to add anything, please feel free.
I think in the interest of time, why don't you go ahead and read the next one? And I'm just not reading, you know, and whenever people raise their flags, that's, or hands, we'll, we'll do it. Questions then?
Sure, uh, thank you, Madam Chair Pete Barron again. Uh, this next amendment is, uh, the amendment, um, to, that achieves the goal that, uh, was in original Amendment fifty-three. I owe a little apology to the council and, and council staff. Uh, this amendment looks a little different than fifty-three in part because a number of uh, the components of, uh, Amendment fifty-three were adopted in, um, a amendment from, uh, Councilman Pruski. Uh, but this amendment does exactly what we discussed at the, uh, council meeting as it relates to, um, the, how region plan, um, processes become amendments to the GDP. Um, and we had the errant term, uh, of, of maps included, and, and this amendment simply strikes, um, the, the word land use maps from, uh, that portion of uh, C four. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the administration? Hopefully you all can hear me better now. The kindergarten's over. Okay, uh, I'm not seeing any questions at this time. Um, Ms. Schultz has asked me to make sure that uh, the person who is going to speak about an amendment identifies which amendment you want actually put up on the screen in case perhaps you don't want something on the screen. We need to, uh, state what we would like to see. Okay, so we've covered the administration's amendments. Why don't we go through Ms. Fiedler's amendments? Whichever ones you would like, um, to have brought up, just name the specific one, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm going to start with the top of the list that was sent out, SR forty. If Ms. Schultz could put the map on the screen. So this amendment does not remove SR forty. It just tweaks the lines of land use that are being adjusted to be consistent with the majority of the rear lot lines on the community parcels, but leaves, um, maritime and a portion of the larger parcel after hearing, uh, some concerns from the community. And I don't know if that map is available that gives a, um, visual on SR forty. I'll slow down a little bit to give Ms. Schultz time to adjust.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fiedler. This is Kaylee Schultz. I actually do not have the map of SR forty available at the moment, but I will make sure it is for everyone to view at a later time.
Perfect, thank you. So I'll just move on to the SAC language amendment that was sent around. Um, I know I spoke with the administration yesterday on this amendment. It really is just an effort to clarify some of the details of forming the, um, SACs and how they will continue through the process. I think that I maybe, or we may be working together, um, to clarify or clean up or work the language a little better so that it's clear, um, and the administration is comfortable.
Madam Chair.
Now my dog is barking, so I can't hear anything. I'm very sorry. It's a bad day. Go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, uh, and, and thank you, the, to Councilwoman Fiedler for, for the conversation yesterday on this amendment. Um, the administration, I think, has a small, uh, word tweak or two, which we'll send to you later uh, today or tomorrow, but generally we are okay with this amendment.
Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna roll through these. So, um, there's another amendment that went around. It is a new appendix for pages twenty-one through twenty-eight of Volume One. In those pages, there are description of plans and programs involved. In those pages, there are description of plans and programs involved in the growth process for the county. It was brought to my attention that members of the stakeholders advisory group will likely find it beneficial to be able to. Reference the timing schedule, um, the departments that heads each of these plans. And if there is a level of public participation and council voting on each of these. Um, so I appreciate the work that went into this amendment. I know um took some time.
Administration really likes this amendment.
Moving along, um Luca sixty-eight. Ms. Schultz, if you could put this amendment uh map up. So this map that I have created shows a few things. It shows the the lines that you see. Going across this um parcel with the satellite imaging, the commercial zoning and the open space zoning. That indicates the two thousand nine land use. What you also see is the current zoning. Um, the parcel with the pink is currently zoned commercial. The the parcel, this very thin strip below the pink is zoned open space. This amendment um changes the land use to match the current zoning for the larger parcel. And retains the open space of the smaller portion at the bottom. There there are a few reasons behind this. The um open space at the bottom was at one point. Connected to the larger open space area across Benfield Boulevard. It was split when that road was built, but there is also a longstanding history behind. Open space being on either side of Benfield Boulevard. In addition, there are some envi- environmental um concerns. If you see the blue thin line ru- running along the right hand of the map. Um, that is a bear branch, and there was a large county improvement project recently done. And just in general, where um I see open space in the fifth district. Uh, I that makes sense to retain, I think it should be retained. So that is amendment to Luca sixty-eight. Moving along, um OOHR twelve. Ms. Schultz, do we have a map for OOHR twelve?
Yes, we do. Give me one moment, please.
Okay, thank you. I've done so many map things, I can't recall what I have and what I have not prepared. Um, so I'll wait for that to pop up on the screen. So OOHR twelve, um, I have spent significant time on because I see this map two ways when you look at it. I see the residential land used to the immediate north as noted by OPZ. Um, which was part of their recommendation against industrial land use. They see it as uh not. Um, a cohesive um land use change when you look at the parcels to the immediate north. But I also see industrial to the east and south on the adjacent properties. So to me, this is something that the regional. Plans um and the stakeholders should take a look at um thinking forward. I don't know that load density residential is the best land use designation for this property, especially considering the existing. Um, structure, and I know that the land owners um of the adjacent residential parcels. Are in communication with the land owner of the HO- OHR. And that communication has been very productive, so I think it's most appropriate to further look at this request during regional plans. And then finally, Ms. Schultz or Madam Chair, I have one area um that I'd like to touch on that is not in the chart. It's small business, just to give an update.
Uh, yes, please go ahead with that.
Okay, thank you. So we um spoke about small business when we had our last uh work session and. Small business has a history of land use being traditional land use, a traditional land use tool in the county. Um, specifically along areas of state roads, at least for the fifth district. Um, and many of those areas still have existing residential structures as uses. So I started down this rabbit hole of small business, looking at Luca one forty-seven. Um, Luca one forty-seven is a residential office building. That really just wants to at at the regional plans, request small business zoning. Um, they are in support of this the small business transitional tool, but it became a challenge. When they had to request commercial um because the small business merger under the commercial umbrella. So I started working on an amendment. I don't have a draft. We're getting close to a draft. That would give OPZ the flexibility of using small business zoning under the commercial umbrella. But also keep it as an independent land use tool for residential and small business zones. But I started jumping, as I mentioned, down this rabbit hole and going through um other areas. In my district that are small business zone and noted that with a merger of small business. Um, there are handfuls of example- examples that um we have land use requests that could fall into. Um, small business beyond just Luca one forty-seven. In looking at each of these small business zone parcels in my district, I then went to the consistency map. Um, that has been shared with OPZ and noticed some of the similar uses. That on a land use change were denied because of neighborhood preservation policy. Were merging as commercial without going through the land use change application process. And I know this sounds very complicated. So Ms. Schultz, if you could show small business merger one. This will be a good visual to explain what I'm I'm talking about. So if you look at this map, you'll see Luca one forty-seven, which was the impetus of this conversation for small business land use. On the request for commercial, um, they, it was recommended that they not get the commercial land use designation. Because of the neighborhood preservation policy area. However, two doors down. That noted as CC eighteen in red, this particular land owner did not apply for a land use change. But they were changed to commercial land use through the merger of small business under commercial. I have a few more examples. I'm not gonna share each of them for the sake of time. Um, but there are several of these small business mergers under the commercial umbrella along Route Two. And being a boulevard that I think are most appropriate to be either small business land use. As reflective of their current zoning or should be discussed during regional plans. Um, this is an inconsistency um that I just think needs to be corrected. But it also opens up, um, thank you, Ms. Schultz, you can pull this one down. I think it opens up a larger conversation for consistency changes. Um, I have a few others in District Five where undeveloped open space is being changed. And I understand from a land use planning perspective, the need to update our maps. Some of the lines do not match and I I get that, but I think that there are some, not all, consistency changes. That the community as a whole would probably want to weigh in on. And at the very least, understand the reason behind each of the changes. So I will leave it at that. I know um the administration had, I think, interest in discussing this area.
Uh, Mister Baron and um well, and Ms. Hare hopefully, do you want to ask a question about a specific thing Ms. Feedler covered?
I was just gonna follow up on the consistency changes specifically, but um.
Okay, so why don't we, we'll let the administration go first and hold that thought.
Thank you, Madam Chair Pete Baron with the administration. I wanna thank uh Councilwoman Feedler uh for working uh with the administration. And I'm I'm confident we're gonna get there on on the small business uh amendment. I know um it's complicated. And there's been a lot of discussions going back and forth. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Pampa to talk uh broader. About consistency changes and and anybody else from the OPZ team that feels um that they have something to add. Please don't be shy.
Uh, good morning, Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Thank you, Mister Baron and Chair Lacy. Um, I just want to address the small business issue a little bit since that's where uh the discussion started. As part of Plan Twenty Forty, we decided to eliminate the small business land use category. Which only contained about seventy-five acres and migrated into commercial. Some of the small business property owners had actually requested to go to commercial. And we were still maintaining the small business zoning. Under the commercial category, and you can review that in the table on page one hundred and sixteen in volume two. So when Councilwoman Feedler started to talk about wanting to bring small business back, it is complicated. Um, because do you immediately go back and take the seventy-five acres that migrated out of small business to commercial? Back to small business? And I think from OPZ's standpoint. We, our feeling was that if somebody had. Expressed opposition to being migrate- migrated to commercial and they wanted to remain small business, that they. Under her amendment, they could go back to small business. Um, but I think a lot of this can get sorted at the region plan level. Um, so we have been working with Councilwoman Feedler on the amendment. And I'm hopeful that in the next couple of days, we can get it finalized to the point that um that we support it.
Madam Chair.
Luca?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead. Sorry, I figured my yellow sweater maybe would count. Um, I just wanna thank uh Chris, Ms. Pampa and Ms. Carrier. For the ongoing communication on this small business amendment and immense amount of time, in my opinion, has spent on getting this. To a good place, and I have appreciated the willingness from OPZ to work on this, so thank you.
Mister Bulkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Mulkey, District Three. Um, Ms. Pampa or Mr. Kai Ziegler or somebody from Planning and Zoning. When was the GDP technically due under state law?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. The last GDP was um prepared in two thousand nine. And state law requires updates every ten years. So two thousand nineteen, if you do the math.
Okay, thank you. And so we're two years past the point when the technical GDP was due, so we're already overdue. Um, I guess my question is, all throughout this process, I continue to hear, well, we're gonna look at this at region plans. We're gonna look at this at region plans. We should address this at region plans. And these consistency changes that have been highlighted, where about seventy-one thousand acres in the county. Over fifty-seven thousand parcels have been changed in terms of their land use designation with no tracking of it. Um, I guess I just want to understand, why is it we can't do region plans before we do the GDP? Like if we're already two years late, we're already past it, why didn't we do this first? That would seem to be the far more logical way to proceed in this. Um, so if anybody can address that, I would be very interested to hear that.
Mister Baron, who would you like to answer?
Um, Mister Kai Ziegler or um Ms. Rhodes might be the right place to start.
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. As I stated in my opening uh explaining the process. Uh, state law represents the comprehensive planning process in the law. It doesn't talk about. Small area plans or region plans in that law. The county decided to set up a process back in the nineteen ninety-seven uh GDP. To uh implement the small area plans to allow the communities to be part of that process. In two thousand nine, when the GDP was amended and updated, the small area plan process was not respected. And so the communities felt left out. And so what we wanted to do is to follow state law by continuing to have these broad policies. But then also incorporating the region plan process so that we can allow communities to have a say in the planning process. And that's essentially why we did that, was to give communities a role to participate in this process. A more targeted area as opposed to the broad policies that are covered in the general development plan.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Councilwoman Feedler uh highlighted an important piece when she was discussing the small business. Uh, amendment that discussed consistency changes. Um, there are, I believe, about seventy-one thousand acres or so of land. With the land use designation being changed or altered in some fashion under these consistency uses. And I I first heard about consistency uses at one of the town halls back in August, I believe it was, for the various regions that were given out by planning and zoning. When they first mentioned them. And I noticed that I couldn't find them on the map. You had to kind of go through and and scroll this map to see where they were. And that made me very nervous because I I felt like the general public may not necessarily notice that something is being changed. If it was not called out as being changed. Um, and so I had asked Planning and Zoning for a list at that time. I want to say it was back in late August, early September. And I know that um planning and zoning is is i- it's challenging to come up with this list. Um, however, I I think it's critically important that if we are changing the land use designations of parcels in the county. That the public have adequate notice of that and an opportunity to really look at them um closely. So eh this amendment is not on this list for today, but it is being worked on. I do just want to note for for discussion purposes today. I have an amendment coming that would uh ask Planning and Zoning to attach as an appendix a list of um the. Consistency changes that they've made throughout the county. And then during the region plan pop process, specifically call them out on any maps. That the various regions are considering so that uh the general public can look specifically at this parcel and say, oh, wait a second. There's a, there's an error here. This is my property and it shouldn't be zoned commercial. It's low density residential or whatever it might be. We've seen a couple of amendments so far um where we've caught those errors and that's and that's great, but I do want to make sure that we're not doing this. And putting these kinds of consistency changes in without giving everyone a chance to look at them. So um I just wanted to put that out there for now, so hopefully um you all will support that amendment uh on Monday. But I I am hopeful that we really give the public a chance to look at these during the regional plan and give them a list.
Mister Baron.
Uh, Mister Kai Ziegler, you had your hand up. Was it related to that or was it previous question?
Actually, um Steve Kai Ziegler, um Planning and Zoning Officer. It comes back to Mister Bulkey's question. Um, I I want to remind everyone that the last time we updated the GDP was two thousand nine. Um, after that date, there were several administrations, several councils that came through. There were changes to county code, county charter. As to how we would do future planning. Um, I believe there was a decision made under the Schu administration that we would initiate an update to the GDP. To be followed by um the um development of, I believe the number was at least seven small area or region plans. So when um this county executive, Mister Pittman, came in, he um he extended or followed through with that directive. To initiate an update to the GDP, and then what came out of that process was the idea there would be nine region plans. I I I would ask you to think in terms of if we had not updated the GDP, we believe we do run afoul of state law. But we would have started region plans that had general guidance, meaning a GDP that would be at least ten years old to start. And by the time we were finishing up the nine region plans, the two thousand um nine GDP would have been probably, um, you know, seventeen to twenty years old. And offer minimal um influence on how to do region planning. So, good or bad, the decision was made to start the cycle with GDP now, Plan Twenty Forty. Followed by the region plans and and we have been approaching it this way since I've been employed with the county. But approximately three years that we would handle it in this manner. So I hope that further clarifies and responds to your question, Mister Bulkey.
And if I can just add, um, going back, Pete Baron with the administration, going back to Councilwoman Hare's. Um, amendment concept, um, obviously the the words on the page matter and we haven't uh gotten to that point yet. But but that approach does uh sound. But but that approach does uh sound uh enticing. I think we we would like it. Um, the the, we have made every effort to be uh and have more public viewing, the the land use viewer is. Is um a great tool and it was something that wasn't available before. And and anything we can do uh to improve uh public. Uh, the public's ability to see every single thing um this administration would support.
Um, Ms. Pampa is, are you gonna speak to the CCs?
Hello, Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Um, yes, I was going to do that, Councilwoman. Uh, Chair Lacy, I'm sorry. I got a little confused with that raise hand thing. I don't use that all the time. I apologize.
It's fine. Please go ahead and then we'll call on, uh, I'll go to Mr. Volkey and other council members, just so everyone knows. At eleven forty, we will take a brief pause so that we can switch over our captioning from the live system to the automatic system. So. There we go, go ahead.
Sure, um, on the issue of the consistency changes. You will recall that the very um, once we were moving towards producing a giraffe. General Development Plan in late summer of twenty twenty. We had the online open house that went out to the public for about six weeks. And one of the tabs in that um online open house was. A slider tool that showed the changes in land use between the two thousand nine. General Development Plan and what would be proposed in Plan twenty forty. So people had the ability to look and use that tool. And the online open house, even though the commenting was turned off, it did remain active for a number of months. Um. The council members started, some started to ask OPZ questions about the consistency changes. And the first time we prepared a web map and submitted it to council for review was October twenty-third, twenty twenty. Um, we really didn't get a lot of questions after that. It seems that we're getting a lot of questions now about the consistency changes. Uh, I just want to point out that. The information about the methodology for the minor consistency changes is found on page one hundred and eighteen in volume two. It's listed as B, minor consistency changes. And it shows the the three kind of criteria that were used in developing what would be consistency changes. Councilman Volkey um and others who have referenced it are correct. It is about seventy-one thousand acres of the county. Or twenty-seven percent of the land area, so it is a large land area, but in general. The comprehensive analysis that was done by staff was to evaluate. On the ground land use. And make it consistency with the planned land use of Plan twenty forty. So again, trying to to make consistency between what existed on the ground. And what the land use would be because the next step in that would be to inform zoning. So um if there are other questions on consistency changes, I can uh answer them, but I did want to. To make those statements um initially.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Pampa. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, I I do want to clarify on Mr. Kai Ziegler's comments, just because the Schu administration did it. Or the prior council or prior councils did it, doesn't make it the same thing that this council wants to do or that we think is right. Um, so I I don't know that there's any need to sort of keep launching back to who did what when, because the reality is we're here today. With that said, um, on the consistency changes, I'm I'm a little bit baffled that OPZ. Has rezoned seventy-one thousand acres, twenty-seven percent of the county, and there's no tracking of where all that was. And the fact that we got it in October and as Councilwoman Hare mentioned, started asking for it even sooner than that. But now somehow, six months in, we still don't have a listing and OPZ can't produce that for us. And somehow it's our fault because we didn't ask enough questions sooner and we should have checked on that. So I I I am gonna push back on that. I mean, that to me is. Kind of like, it's not, I I didn't create this map and make these consistency changes and then come back and say, whoops, I've got no tracking of that. I don't know who I changed or where. I mean, I pointed out a couple of these just in my district in one small area. And the biggest question that I have with these consistency changes is to what extent are we now reclassifying land? That is going to be able to be developed in a different way than what it's allowed to under the oh-nine GDP. And nobody can can tell me that. I mean, I don't have that answer. So you, I'm being asked to vote on a land use document. That says certain land is going to be classified in a particular way. And I don't even know exactly what I'm voting on unless I go through my entire district parcel by parcel and look at every little nook and cranny and. As the amendment that I passed a couple of meetings ago, where there was a tiny sliver in front of medium density residential that had been changed to conservation. Ostensibly as a consistency change, where it made no sense. The only way we found that was thankfully, the landowner in that area looked and found it. And came to me with the problem. So, so I I think this is just a huge issue and and. We can fight over whose fault it is one where and and you know what people should have asked, but I just can't believe that OPZ. Basically reclassified seventy-one thousand acres of county land and we don't know where they are.
Um, Mr. Volkey, um, Pete Barron with the administration, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Pampa in a second, but. Uh, we we do, information has been shared and and you use the word rezoning. Nothing has been rezoned. Plan twenty forty does not rezone anything. So. That comes later as as Ms. Rhodes talked about in the beginning of this meeting about how this process works. I think it's important to be clear about what this plan is and what this plan is. And so, Ms. Pampa, if if you want to respond.
Sure, Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Um, first of all, OPZ made a recommendation. Because the council has the ultimate approval authority. We do not. Um, uh, and. I actually, when Councilwoman Hare uh talked about the amendment that she's proposing to address this. I mean, I like the concept and we are happy to work with her and provide a list. I think that. There are people that came to us uh throughout the process and said, I don't think you have the right thing. The right classification on my property for these reasons and we looked and there were some changes that were made. That can still happen at the region plan uh level as well. So I um. I don't know, I I I understand Councilman Volkey's concerns. Uh, but I. I'm not sure that I agree with uh how catastrophic he's making it sound. But I don't want to argue about it.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So, when we're talking about zoning and land use. I know that we're at the land use stage at this point. But when I look at the consistency changes, what just rings my alarm bells is that the land use determination. Does open the conversation for the underlying zoning that's coming. So I think that is. The concern when we start talking about land use zoning, land use zoning. So, with regard to the slider map. Um, when the slider map was removed, I actually asked for it back because I really, it it just works for how I um look at things. And the slider map included details like the the intersecting nearby road. So I found that very helpful to be able to identify where the consistency changes were taking place. Understanding that that slider map was very cumbersome for others to navigate because it showed everything in color. Um, the consistency land use map that council has had a link to with the corresponding list. I have personally found challenging to go through. The first challenge is that you have to be zoomed into a certain point on the map for the consistency changes to pop up on the screen. If you are zoomed out too far, it only noted notes the Lucas and the S R's. Once you zoom in, you can only see a portion of your district on the screen at a time. And there is no identifying information for those consistency changes. There is no address, there's no road note uh identification, so. I feel more comfortable with the idea that Councilwoman Hare has proposed. Where we allow the regional plan SACs to really go through these and take a look. To make sure that there is no human error and make sure that these are all appropriate. Um, and that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Uh, you're right on time. It's eleven forty. Madam Secretary, can you guide us through the transition?
Yes, I can. Just give me one moment here. I'm going to say goodbye to our captioner, Beverly.
Thank you, Beverly.
Okay, where's that? Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I remind everyone, please state your name. Uh, and your office or district before your comments. Madam former chair, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Pickard, D two. I just want to um make a quick comment as we proceed through our debate and conversation through the GDP. I've heard a couple times um uh my colleagues speaking for the council and we need to make sure we are speaking for ourselves. Um, going back to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Volkey. Um, I understand you're not pleased with doing the GDP ahead of region plans. But we've been on this path for nearly three years. I am quite comfortable with it. And am looking forward to the region planning going forward. But either way, we're three years in, dude. Like, please just don't speak for me when you. Bring your comments in to represent the entire council. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have anything else on what Ms. Fiedler has shared so far? Seeing none, I note that Ms. Hare has had to temporarily leave the meeting. And um I have quite a lot of amendments, but I can wait. Um, Mr. Volkey, I don't know what your schedule is like, but would you like to go ahead since you have? Three amendments for us to consider?
Uh, I I appreciate the offer, Madam Chair. I actually am in the same position as Ms. Hare. I have to jump off the meeting for a bit and then come back, so. Uh, I'm happy to defer to somebody else at this point.
Okay, uh, no problem. Mr. Pruski, you can't save me here. You don't actually have any amendments and I know you have to go at noon, so. Okay, Ms. Radvian, are you planning any amendments that you want to talk about?
Yeah.
Even though they're not listed in the in the list here.
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I would be willing and uh actually grateful for that opportunity. Um, they're hopefully coming to you. Um, I just need to review the final drafts. Um, from our wonderful staff. Um, let me actually pull them up since I didn't have them right here, but I can momentarily. Um. All right. Okay, so I'm gonna start with one that I I hope everyone can get behind. And this is basically to add um. The adoption of the vision zero principles that um have been used in many jurisdictions to um. Encourage um a- and to eliminate all preventable deaths and injuries from automobile accidents. From pedestrians and cyclists. So um, the the vision zero means zero fatalities, zero injuries. And um, that's basically, you know, adopting this as a county would be in line with a lot of other jurisdictions. Um, and so that's one of the um amendments that I'm pro- proposing. Um, one of the other amendments that I'm proposing is uh basically. We just to look at um. Look at our stormwater fees. We still have a lot of um areas with um. Very large part parts of their, are very large parts of a parcel covered with impervious surface. Where um, I I believe that if we were able to encourage, you know, I just think of like, think of any um strip mall. Think of a shopping mall that has just a very large um parking lot with no storm drainage, no um. No trees, you know, built in between the parking rows or anything like that. Um, and encouraging um some of those impervious surfaces to be changed to pervious surfaces. Um, by adjusting stormwater fees. Um, we're also getting to the stage where there's um available. Um, road and sidewalk surface materials that are themselves pervious, so you can sort of have both. You can have um, you know, a parking area or a driveway that actually is uh made with a pervious surface. Um, and same thing with the sidewalk. So that would just be um, you know, an encouragement. To um, again, limit our stormwater runoff into the bay, which is one of the single largest uh polluters that we have. So that's, those are the two that I've got. I know I've got another Luca, but I'm working on getting the um correct parcels. From um, making sure I have the parcels correct. There was a bunch of confusion around that and I still have not heard back from the requesters, so.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, those all sound uh good in concepts. Uh, would like to see the language. Um, and hopefully we will be able to support.
Okay, and I will be um sharing, as soon as I just review them and make sure everything looks good, I will um be asking our staff to share them. With both the administration and my colleagues, so that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you, Ms. Radvian. Does anybody else have any, have any questions for Ms. Radvian? Okay, seeing none at this time, we will um move on. I suppose um we could go to Ms. Pickard, but where has she gone? She's she's disappeared.
Ms. Pickard will be right back.
Okay, well, I was just gonna say.
She asked and you shall receive. Ms. Pickard is here.
Okay, um, I tell, I tell you what, I think all, Ms. Pickard, it looks like all of the amendments that you are contemplating. Are policy-related. Um. I have, I think, twenty amendments that are specific to uh parcels. And then seven that are related to policy. Um. Okay, so I'm just going to call myself first here to at least get through the specific parcel chunk. Um, so Sarah Lacy, District One. I've shared all of my draft amendments in advance. Um, rather than really run down all twenty of them, I will just sort of sum up to say what I've tried to do. Is uh respond specifically to community concerns and property owner concerns. Um, and to, as far as larger areas, um, mostly in my district relating to transit-oriented development. Um, what I think this process uncovered or highlighted is that. Uh, each potential area of transit-oriented development in District One is unique from all the others. Um, with the development that is currently occurred around um each stop. Or the fact that the stop is actually in um neighboring, a neighboring jurisdiction like Howard County. Um, and at the time that development around those stops occurred, Anarod County didn't put in infrastructure. Uh, to make uh further development on the Anarod County side very feasible. So I think in those instances, well, I I think transit-oriented development is a great idea. We need some more time to really uh study the feasibility of making sure that any of that that development is actually walkable. Development, which is part of uh one of our our key goals. Um. And I do have a couple of uh amendments, or perhaps it's, might just be one, no, it's two. Um, an amendment where someone, uh, the property owner did not file for a land use change application. Um, and so they came to me as we are in uh the council process. Um, there's a a former restaurant in, it was called Snyder's Willow Grove. Up in uh toward Hammond's Ferry area. Um, and they would like to, uh. The restaurant's been closed for quite a while, but um they want to be able to have a catering facility at the same spot and basically renew. And revitalize what they have, but to be able to use uh a use that they they can't currently, under their current land use designation. a use that they, they can't currently, under their current land use designation. And over the years, this is a very historical area, and the land use has changed all around them except for their one parcel, so they just want to be consistent with their parcel. And I know we haven't, we haven't had a lot of landowners coming to us this late in the process, but I think it's a good idea, and so I've included that in my amendments. Does anyone, well, I suppose, Mr. Barron, do you have anything about my various land use amendments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. The administration is in the process of reviewing them. I think we got the full list on Friday. There are a couple in there that, that make a lot of sense. I know there were one or two, there was a correction, there was a street name that was spelled wrong. There are a couple that are kind of no brainers. The, the administration generally, we're talking about a major change generally prefers, as we have in other districts, prefers to, to have these all looked at in detail in region planning. But we will go through this list in detail and, and share with you exactly the reasoning behind each one before the meeting on Monday. So without calling out any specific ones, there are a few that it does sound like it makes sense, but as it comes to land use changes, it has been the policy of this administration to support the, the professional planners determination in the, in this part of the process and, and look at each in detail during region planning unless a mistake or error or new information has come to light. So it is fully within the purview of this council to disagree with us, and, and you may disagree with us, and, and that's okay.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for me about my land use amendments? Okay, let's then talk about my policy amendments. Ms. Schultz, if you could put up the amendment about the diversity language? Thank you. So this, this amendment, I thought that under, in the paragraph about composition of the stakeholder advisory committees, where it currently says that that age and gender are two criteria to be considered in the composition of the committees. I thought it might be better to go with language that this council has previously agreed upon as it relates to the Human Relations Commission. And in Bill ninety-four nineteen, we use the language ethnic and minority composition of the committees. I think the age and gender are likely to work themselves out, but that they might be sort of, how can I say this? Unduly discriminatory in the sense of just, I don't mean like legal discrimination, I mean too fine of a distinction really that isn't so relevant. Whereas we know that the, the ethnic and minority composition of our, you know, our Human Relations Commission, we've already agreed that that is certainly a criteria that, that matters, and we want to ensure that we do want to ensure we have diverse committees, but I think the, on the issues of age and gender, they're going to tend to work themselves out because anybody who is, you know, responsible and forward-thinking enough to serve on this committee is going to be thinking about how can we serve different age groups? And I don't, I don't really think gender is all that big of an issue when it comes to land use as an overall plan, so I wanted to kind of bring in this language. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. We think this is a great amendment. Appreciate the discussion we've had over the last couple of weeks about bringing this forward. This totally makes a lot of sense, and the administration's happy to support.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I guess my question is this language requires and shall is different from the other language for the stakeholder advisory committees, which is may. So what happens in a scenario where the applicants that have expressed interest in serving on the stakeholder advisory committee are of of a certain category that doesn't reflect the diversity that this language is requiring? Do does the council member and OPZ then seek to fill those? I'm just trying to figure out how that language requires and shall goes into place when there are certain communities not represented just by process of application and interest?
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Sarah Lacy, District One. I think that's an excellent question, and what I was contemplating would happen is the same thing that we've, we require for the Human Relations Commission, which is that the county executive would have the, the duty to try to balance that, that composition. So if that means extra work is needed to, you know, to solicit, to cultivate, you know, a group of folks or individuals to apply so that that diversity is achieved, I think, I think they are, they would be able to handle that kind of process, so it wouldn't be specifically on a council member.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Follow-up question if I may?
Sure.
So just playing this out, what what happens if the administration is reaching out to facilitate that required diversity and is coming up short once members of the community understand the time commitment and the varying factors? Are, are we then like just begging someone to fill a slot that they may or may not have a level of interest in? That's one of my concerns.
Sarah Lacy, District One. I, I think that won't turn out to be a, a true thing in practice. I think, you know, residents of the community is just, if you know that these major changes are being made in your community and the relationships are built up, I'm confident that they'll be able to recruit people who are interested in, in doing this very important community job. But I think if there needs to be a legal out, like, you know, shall use best efforts, shall use reasonable efforts, however the Office of Law might want to word it, I would be, I would be open to that.
Okay.
Pete Barron with the administration. I'll defer to Office of Law and the legal out. I'll just say this administration is, is committed to making sure these committees are representative of their regions. In, in all ways, we're a county of nearly six hundred thousand people. There are a lot of people that we will be seeking to, if you have fifteen on each of these committees, it adds up to a fair amount of people, but I think we can do it. I'm confident we can.
Okay, any other questions on that one? I'm seeing none. Ms. Schultz, would you please put up my amendment for new policy, HC six point two? Thank you. This amendment is actually something that arising out of when I was running for office, one of the things that I I spoke to residents about, especially as far west as we are, is how there's really no convenient location in the western part of the county for people to be able to essentially attend as, as sort of a satellite location to attend and participate in public meetings. And that there is also a shortage, that we have essentially an issue we need to resolve with our physical infrastructure being ADA accessible. And so I think this spot in planning for healthy communities, I don't know, it seemed to be the best spot for it. I don't know if the administration has another idea for where this idea could go in the plan, but it seems to me that if, you know, you can access, physically access a government service center on the western part of the county without having to sit through the traffic to get to Annapolis for forty-five minutes or you know, what have you. Anyway, the point is, we all could be using that time in different ways that might make us healthier than, than commuting. And it's a healthier community because you get more public participation. That's my idea. Mr. Barron?
Mr. Pete Barron with the administration. We support. This makes sense. Good, good addition.
Any comments from my colleagues? Thank you. Let's get the spotlight off me for a second. Ms. Radvian, you said you had another amendment, so let's go to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District Six. This is actually an amendment that I had previously distributed, but then I pulled because I wanted to do some double checking. And I have decided to go with the amendment as it was originally drafted and given to you. It's basically an amendment that would add a transit-oriented development overlay to the Annapolis Town Center. Oh my goodness, and she's got it? Thank you so much, Ms. Schultz. Yeah, so basically it just adds that. There's already some transit things that are, there's already some transit that comes to the Annapolis Mall area, which is part of the town center. Within the town center boundaries, there are some possible plans for a transit hub. You know, obviously, we don't have a train in, like some of the other transit-oriented development areas in our county, but I think, you know, Annapolis is, is got to be considered a transit hub. And the more we can develop transit in Annapolis because it has access to Route fifty, it has access, easy access to ninety-seven. It's reasonably close to the Bay Bridge. It's the, you know, city, city, well, see, the county and a state center of government. So I think there's a lot of reasons that we should be advocating for transit and make sure that that overlay is in place for part of District Six.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Want to thank the staff. It was actually at the way bottom of our tracking sheet, but we did find it. We support. This is a great addition.
Any comments from my colleagues? Seeing none. Okay, I, let's see. I'm gonna go to my amendments then. Sarah Lacy, District One. Ms. Schultz, could you please bring up the conservation and open space definition amendment? Okay, I don't think I've got a chance to read this since it was finished from the Office of Law, so I apologize, but so as I have heard from constituents, there's been some confusion about the new land use category of conservation, I think because we all have in mind what conservation is. And we also already had in mind what open space land use is, but the definitions changed in a significant way. And so this is a, and this amendment is an attempt to make it a bit more clear and more specific that conservation land use is really about. At least in my mind, it's about more fragile lands, the environmental quality of the land, the importance that it not have humans doing anything on the land versus open space land use, which should be considered much more a much more broad category compared to conservation. And that essentially it should be the default is open space land use, unless the environment is too fragile for open space land use. Again, because these two categories, at least with, well, with open space, we're still, it would still be focused on recreational uses for the land, so not, not talking about, you know, residential development, for example. But developing recreational uses for lands that, you know, involve taxpayer dollars that may come from a couple of different programs. That should be something this county values, and so that was the genesis of this amendment. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have begun our review on this amendment. I, I haven't had a chance to get feedback from all our agencies on this. Understand there is some real confusion and nervousness in, in the public around these terms and what they can mean for, for county amenities. So I'm gonna ask Matt Johnston to talk a little bit about the, what this is and, and promise you, Madam Chair, that we're gonna give this amendment a, a full look, and as soon as we have our, our review done, we will, we will get back in touch.
Thank you, Mr. Barron and Madam Chair. Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director. So this is a, a, we welcome this conversation, and I think there was a little bit of this conversation also in today's Capital Gazette a little bit about the difference between open space and conservation on publicly owned lands. And there was a, a quote in there from me, and I want to reiterate that quote for the record today, that no designation of open space or conservation in Plan Twenty Forty on a public park property precludes or short circuits the entire stakeholder and community outreach process that the Department of Parks and Recreation will go through when they're considering amenities for, future amenities for that park. You know, the future amenities can be passive in nature and include a lot of preservation of the land with passive recreational trails and water access. And they can be active in nature with, with large ball fields and things like that. And nothing in this plan takes away from that process. In fact, there are a couple of other large plans that are coming, which will help that, inform future amenities. So I'll just talk very briefly about what those are. There's the Green Infrastructure Network Plan, which this council will see in the coming months. And that will look at where do we have preserved land and, and passive recreational uses around the county, and where do we not? So that will inform future passive recreational amenities, and there will be kind of an equity analysis. We want to provide those in as many communities as we can. Similarly, the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, which is put together by the, the Parks and Recreation Department, will look at an equity analysis of where we have ball fields, tennis courts, all those active recreational areas. And it will also build off of that green infrastructure passive recreational amenity analysis. So all of that is to say that those two plans will be very, very important in planning future amenities, much more so than any land use designation in Plan Twenty Forty. In fact, the land use designations in Plan Twenty Forty on parkland are more akin to, if you look down from above, satellite down, down on the ground, do we have a lot of active recreational uses there? A lot of buildings, ball fields? Or do we have a lot of trees, wetlands, streams right now? It's not to, to say that our vision for that parkland is this in the future. That process comes later. And then just the last thing that I'll say very quickly is there are all these plans that inform that process, but at the end of the day, there's a robust community and stakeholder engagement outreach effort that the department will do with every community with a park before they bring a capital project to this council to consider for amenities. So there was a lot there to unpack, but I wanted to make sure that we got it on the record that the land use does not preclude in any way the future amenities planned for these parks, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D two. So this has been a confusing
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Pickard, D two. So this has been a confusing change from the two thousand and nine. Plan to the Plan Twenty Forty, and even up here in sort of landlocked D two, I'm getting constituent questions about it. Um, I was trying to circulate around the map. So in two thousand and nine. Parks, county parks, state parks were all blue and coded government institution like. Schools were and the Rundle Center was and all that stuff. So when we moved to Plan Twenty Forty, our parks. No matter who owns them are now classified in this open space or conservation. Which you can see a couple of things. Open space conflates with program open space, how property was purchased through state funds, right? And conservation with the county executive and this administration's keen eye to um, environmental stewardship. But when we're looking at county parks, constituents want to know that they're going to be open and accessible. And active and all those things. I'm curious as whether the, this underlying land use designation in the land use map, um. Now my coffee maker is going to start beeping mid-conversation now that I'm upstairs. It's one of those days, guys, um. The, I'm curious if this land use designation, if there's another way, or is there another way on our very vast? Geo cortex mapping of county assets that we can. I think parks are identified in other mapping categories. So can we identify that a park is a park is a park? And then the underlying land use has certain meaning, um, and maybe Ms. Lacy's amendment will address some of the. Our constituents' concerns about. Um, really, there's fear, as I, I know the administration knows this, there's fear that. We're trying to keep county amenities. Um, more private than they need to be, as we have certain parks that are not as accessible. As other parks. But I will say in doing my wandering around the land use map, Kinder Farm Park. Um, is designated conservation land use. Whereas similar to um, our state park at Sandy Point is conservation land use. And Mayo and Bright Beverly Triton are beach, those beach parks are conservation. And then there's other parks that are designated open space. I didn't get a chance to look, but I can assume that Severn Danza Park, which is almost all ball fields and our um. Turf, our lovely turf uh, park that's not in District Two, gotta get that plug in. It's over in Crofton, um, is probably open space, not conservation, since it's all turf. Beautiful turf fields that District Two youth teams don't get to play on, um. So that's just my take on how we move forward with this open space conservation. It does need to be clarified in some way. Cause people are writing letters to the editor about it. Thanks.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica here District Seven. I, I don't have much to add, other than to say this has also been a huge topic of conversation with my constituents in District Seven. I, I appreciate from planning and zoning, I have probably sent you at least a dozen, if not more emails on this topic repeatedly. Um, sort of asking, wait, one more follow-up, so I, I appreciate all the time you've spent with me on that. Um, Mister Johnson, that was a helpful explanation, and I, I do wanna, part of the reason I asked. At the last meeting about this kind of access issue and whether the designation makes a difference on that front was really to get at the meat of this issue. Um, I do want to note, actually, I think Councilwoman Picker just said that Mayo Beach Park is designated conservation. Um, it's actually not, which is one of the amendments that I have um, to discuss for today. Beverly Triton is designated conservation. Um, so um, I do believe Mayo Beach should be designated conservation. When looking at what's currently on the ground and what is actually in the master plan for Mayo Beach Park, uh, it is all passive. Um, you know, recreation, there's no ball fields, there's no golf course going there, things like that. So to that conversation, I think that, that makes a whole lot of sense. Um, so I just wanted to, to put that in there for now, happy to talk about that, but I think the amendment is, is mostly self-explanatory otherwise, but. Um, just thank you, everyone, for this discussion. This is, this is a big deal for parts of District Seven.
Does anybody have any other comments on uh, the proposed amendment? Or the to be proposed, conservation versus open space? If not, um, I think I have just one more I wanted to ask, um. To be displayed, Ms. Schultz, could you put up my peninsula definition, please? Thank you. Okay, um, pretty straightforward. I know there's, there's certainly been controversy about the definition of a peninsula policy area. Um, and so I've tried to come up with a revision that focuses on the environmental characteristics that define a peninsula. Um, and that would be that existing communities that are nearly surrounded by water. Um, I think it makes sense to say that such areas are not intended for substantial growth or land use change. Um, but may be targeted for revitalization. Um, and that, you know, when you think about, there are other peninsulas. Where, you know, lots of development has been, has been put into them, like the state of Florida. Um, and it's, you know, it's still a peninsula for nearly all of the state of Florida, but um, some of the characteristics that were in. That are in the current definition, like having one major road in and out. Um, they're not, I think they're just not very helpful. The, I, I, I took it as a very good point, the uh, person who commented to us um, on April fifth. About, you know, sitting in traffic on, in one spot in the county versus another spot in the county, really, those, they're. They're not significantly different. Um, and I think the, the second component that is very important. Um, in the original definition, and that I, I kept and tried to just tighten up about peninsula is that. Uh, that of considering vulnerability to sea level rise and saltwater intrusion. Um, I think a related question that doesn't need to be in this definition, though, is, you know, long, when we're. We are looking long-term in this plan. Um, and if the communities that are, you know, peninsula policy areas. Um, are fed up with having one road in and out, then somebody ought to be proposing to build them a bridge or a loop. Or something else that they can, you know, drive on. Um, and I, so. I think it's not fair to the rest of the county to have that kind of a characteristic in, in these definitions, and just, I just don't see it as helpful. Um, but this, I think, is a much more defensible definition that doesn't um, in effect. You know, say, again, a peninsula is more important than traffic um, in other parts of the county. Mister Baron.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, this is another one that we are in the process of reviewing and. And we'll have to circle back to you. I, I, it's a big issue and it is. Uh, one, I, I know you put some time in trying to um, tackle and, and want to be respectful with, with. Decent feedback, and at this point, we haven't had the chance to do the review on what you just laid out.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Um, I, I appreciate the attempt at. Improving the definition, however, speaking for a district that. Is in the peninsula map, I have to argue that single access road is very unique. You are literally locked into one way to get to and from your home. Um, and it's, it's an important factor for those um, on many peninsulas. Um, we are a county of peninsulas. Um, so I'd like to discuss this further. Um, because I want to make sure that in altering the definition. We aren't changing the recognition that peninsulas are, in fact, very different from other sections of the county.
Thank you, um, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodvian, District Six. Um, I think something to consider along with that single road access is emergency access. Um, which, you know, is obviously not every day, but when you need emergency access, it's critically important, and. I know there are multiple examples of the Annapolis Neck Peninsula where um, you know, there had been some sort of incident, Forest Drive was blocked. Um, cha- children were left at home with um, with a parent with no way to get to them. Um, and ambulance needed to get to someone who was having a heart attack um, and could not get to them. Um, so that kind of example, I mean, I, I definitely understand, I, I sit on traffic, not on a peninsula. Um, well, actually, I haven't in quite a long time, because it's been pretty mellow the last twelve, thirteen months, but um, I certainly understand that. You know, this is something the entire county, really, the entire region deals with, but I do think there is a little bit of uniqueness, especially when it comes to that emergency access. Um, you know, that emergency aspect of it, so I, I'm. I definitely see the point here, but I want to make sure that we're um, you know, accounting for. That unique situation, um, especially in terms of emergency access, and that when we're talking about looking for additional pathways. Down these peninsulas, I, I probably feel like I've said this eight thousand times, maybe not to you, but to somebody I've said this. Um, we have to think broader than roads and cars, we have to start thinking other kinds of um, transit, so. Anyway, I know those two things don't always um, go hand in hand, because um, you know, folks are still, you know, we're very car tied. Um, we're a very car tied society, and I, I would love to see us kind of break out of that, so anyway, those two things to just add to the discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna uh, respond and then I'll call you, Ms. Pickard, um, Sarah Lacy, District One. I actually think it's, it's really critical to um, the viability of this definition of a peninsula that. It starts with being surrounded by some natural barrier on basically three sides, whether that's water, maybe it's the critical area. Um, you know, I can argue that my, where I live, my neighborhood is actually a peninsula in the county. Because I'm surrounded on three sides by forest conservation, and there's only one road in and out of my community. But obviously, that's not like the volume of traffic that exists for um, you know, some of our highly developed. Peninsulas. Um, and I think in that way, if we, we agree, we could recognize what a peninsula is based on the. Features of the natural environment around the peninsula. The question is, how do we develop to meet the needs of the people who live there? Um, and if the, you know, focus really could be on, say, we need to increase access for safety and response times. I could be, you know, totally supporting that. Um, but I think. There, there is concern, not just I think, but I know there is concern that the definition as it's currently written will stop development that would allow people who otherwise. Can't access a peninsula from being able to enjoy that. Um, and, and I understand why. So there's, I think we need to be, we owe it to ourselves and to the county to be clear and factual in what we're describing. What we're trying to, um, you know, trying to say and accomplish with this particular, particular area. Uh, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if, I don't know if this is the right way, you know, your amendment is the right way to define a peninsula or not. I do just want to let people know, there are other parts of the county where communities have one way in and one way out. If you've ever, if you live along Telegraph Road. And you need to get out, it's like Frogger, it's like Crossy Roads, if you've ever played those video games, and. People, people take their lives in their hands every single day. So we do have traffic hotspots all around the county, so. Um, yeah, those are some of the things that you choose when you choose to live on a peninsula. Um. You are, understand that you are gonna have one road in, one road out, most likely, but um, I'm not sure this is. I'm not saying that I think this definition is um, the perfect one, I'm just acknowledging that. When other people look at the peninsula principles that have been very much highlighted in Plan Twenty Forty, and they. Have similar issues, but in other parts of the county, those of us in North County are getting constituent emails about it. It, it's just a fact, so we're all responding to constituents saying, hey, what about us up here? Um, it's not my amendment, um, I'm not touching the best peninsula stuff for nothing, but um. Half the CAC lives on a peninsula that formed this document, so. Um, they had a loud voice.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodvian, District Six. Um, just another thing, while again, I'm, I'm open to um, you know, restyling the peninsula principles. Um, or the definition um, as we go through this, but I think another thing to consider is um. Oh, I'm sorry, I totally lost my train of thought.
Involving peninsulas.
Yes, yes, I know involving peninsulas. Um, good heavens, uh, come back to me, I'm so sorry, I just lost my train of thought.
That's fine. Does anybody else train at, train at the station? Anybody else? Okay, if, if not, um, we should probably, Madam Secretary, could you join us for a moment, please?
Yes, I'm always here with you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to discuss that, since we're on the automatic captioning. I didn't try to adhere to having a break at twelve fifteen. I'm wondering if we should take a break, but we need to, we need to agree on our stop time. Or we, well, we usually would, but this is very important, so.
Yeah, at this point in time, I would say any recess that the council would like to call would be for the, you know, to benefit the actual people who are in attendance. There's no need to give any captioner a break at this point in time.
Okay, uh, so I'll tell you what, um, if you'd like to take a break now for like five or ten minutes, would you raise your hand? And, okay, um. Let's do that, let's have a comfort break for five minutes and then, and come back. Okay, thanks. Madam Secretary. Oh, we still need one more person, I think.
I believe, uh, Mr. Volkey, Ms. Hare, possibly Mr. Pruski had to depart this meeting, so we only have four council members still in attendance.
Madam Secretary, um, should we wait for Ms. Radian? Or there, there we go. Okay, please call the roll.
I'm so sorry, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Ms., um, Fiedler, sorry.
Present.
And Ms. Radian.
I am present.
Um, Ms. Bowler, I see we still have our county auditor, Ms. Linda Schewett. We still have our legislative council. So as expected.
Madam Secretary. I'm still here.
Ms. Hare, you're here too. Sorry. I thought you had to leave as well. I thought that that was the message that I got.
I, I had a, a brief break. I had to leave at 11:30, but I came back at 12:00.
Okay, my apologies. Um, Madam Chair, we have, uh, enough counsel and people present to proceed.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, Ms. Radian, you recalled your thought about the peninsula amendment.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, Lisa Radian, District Six. I guess I just had one question, um, and then I, I maybe slightly concerned that it would be open to interpretation. When we, um, you know, discuss or when the definition includes the words nearly surrounded by water, or communities nearly surrounded by water. Um, you know, obviously, like you had mentioned, the entire peninsula of Florida is a community surrounded, um, nearly surrounded by water on all sides. So I'm just curious where, how narrow or how wide, um, you know, that definition could be drawn. Anyway, it's just a, a thought about, you know, some things that, I mean, part, you know, really the Annapolis Peninsula, for example, goes quite far, um, north. Um, and, you know, is, should that be included because it's nearly surrounded on all sides by water? So I guess I just, um, I'm worried about the specificity within that definition, or if maybe there's something, um, that I'm misinterpreting.
Sarah Lacy, District One, um, as a sponsor of the amendment, I will say I just kept that language from the existing definition. But I think, um, it would be helpful if the administration would please chime in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron. I'm gonna ask, uh, somebody at OPC to, to weigh in on, on how that is looked at. Mr. Kay Ziegler or Ms. Pompa?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Um, could you repeat the question? I think that was coming from Ms. Radian. Um, thank you, uh, Lisa Radian, District Six. So my question is, you know, when we talk about communities, um, that are nearly surrounded by water on, I, I don't know if it says three sides, but, um, the concept of being nearly surrounded by water, you know, depending on how you define community could be quite broad or quite narrow. Um, so I'm just wondering if, um, I don't know, something maybe to offer a little more specificity might be valuable there. Um, just to, you know, make sure we're targeting the areas that we want. Yeah, I mean, I think on the peninsula, um, policy area definition, uh, we are, we're gonna need to look at this because there've been a lot of ideas that have come forward today. Um, and, you know, we're hearing a lot of different concerns. And we're absolutely willing to, to work to find a solution, um, on this language.
Thank you, Ms. Pompa. Um, anybody else on the peninsula before we, uh, jump to another topic? Okay, um, let's see. Ms. Hare, would you like to discuss any of your amendments?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um, we've already discussed briefly kind of two of the ones that I was thinking about or, or that are still pending and being worked on, which is, um, the consistency change, um, and then actually the, the Mayo Park change of the land use designation, I think is, Mayo Beach Park, I think is fairly self-explanatory, although I'm happy to, to address either of those again in more detail. Um, I, I have a couple, uh, new policy, um, additions. Uh, the first one is BE 10.3. If we want to pull that one up, Ms. Schultz. Thank you so much. I think this one is, is fairly self-explanatory also. Uh, we've talked a lot about public transportation infrastructure and, and the need for it. And so this simply asks that we consider incentives for any projects that might, um, sort of get additional contributions to public transportation infrastructure, whether that be, you know, some kind of a transit station or pedestrian or bicycle facilities and things like that, that that might be something the council want to look at, wants to look at. Um, in a similar vein, we could take that one down. Thank you so much. Uh, policy BE 13.6 is a new one that I'd like to add. If we could pull that one up, Ms. Schultz. So this one is also, I think, fairly self-explanatory. It's BE 13.6. We recently, as a council, approved the lease of the, uh, Brown Field to do the, the solar project. This would simply add, um, some language to encourage redevelopment of, of brownfield properties. Um, through whatever incentives we might be able to come up with, whether that is, you know, increased review plan or, or something of that nature. Um, I'm sorry, uh, faster review plan time, things like that. Uh, and to consider kind of a flexibility in the uses, much like we did with that lease to look at the possibility for, um, you know, whether it be energy generation or, or whatnot, um, for those projects. So those are those two. We could take that one down now, Ms. Schultz. Thank you. Um, I did want to discuss, so there's, there's an interesting, this was not a land use change application that came before me, um, or a staff recommendation, but, um, there is a, an old volunteer fire station in Galesville. Um, that's, that's no longer being used and it, it seems to be a really cool site for some potential adaptive reuse. Um, to make use of that, of that old fire station in a new fashion. It's currently zoned low-density residential, which doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense for, for the fact that there was a fire station there. Um, and so I, in talking with the community, folks there have talked a lot about trying to, trying to, um, make that main street on, in Galesville, you know, a bakery or an ice cream shop or kind of a local, um, you know, really a vibrant local community. And this, this property is right on that main street. There are a couple of other commercial properties scattered along Main Street that this seems to fit really well with. So I, I think, um, it would be really cool to see something with that property. Um, and then a land use designation of commercial makes a little bit more sense. So, um, there's an amendment that's been shared with all of you on that one. Um, I also want to note, uh, Luca 38. Um, and we, we may have a map for this one or we may not. I'm not sure. Um, Ms. Schultz can let me know one way or another. Um. Luca 38 is down in South County. It is, there is an existing mobile home park, uh, with about 500 mobile homes in it. It is currently zoned R5. Um, there are about eight parcels involved with it. The landowners currently about four of those parcels, I believe, are zoned R5. The remaining four that they own are zoned RA. The landowners had requested, um, that the land use designation be changed. Um, to, I believe it was medium-density residential or low-medium-density residential, uh, for the, for all of the parcels. Here we go. Um, they were looking to expand that, that mobile home park to the neighboring parcels. Um. The planning and zoning rejected that Luca and, and put the land use designation for all eight parcels as rural, um, agricultural. And while I agree with planning and zoning that the new parcels that they had asked for to be, to be zoned medium-density residential, those should stay rural agricultural. I don't think it makes any sense. They're fully wooded parcels. Um, there's, you know, there's no sewer or water there. It doesn't make sense to change those to the medium-density residential. I'm very concerned about changing the existing mobile home park that already has 500 units on it and already has a designation, a zoning of R5. I'm very concerned with putting a land use designation on there of rural agricultural that would create an inconsistency between what's there and the land use. Um, we've talked a lot about trying to make the land use map be reflective of what is on the ground and also what we'd like to see. So this amendment tries to sort of very surgically correct that piece and take the portion of the land that is already zoned R5 and change that land use designation to low-medium, which is the corresponding land use designation. So that the existing mobile home park, um, stays in conformance essentially. Uh, but the rest of the property that they had requested that change in land use, it, it, it does not do that. It keeps that as it is, as rural agricultural. Um, a little bit of background on this property. This, uh, mobile home park, I believe, had its initial approvals. Gosh, I think I've heard as far back as the 1970s, um, they had a non-conforming use for density, uh, in the 90s, I believe. And so that's how, I mean, they've had this many mobile home parks, the ability to put that there, this many mobile homes for, for decades. Um, and in the last GDP, in the last comp rezoning, the R5 designation was given to them to help correct that non-conforming use. So I, I hate to put it back and create a new non-conforming use, um, by changing that land designation. So that's, it's a little bit of a tricky one. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Um, I think that, that is about all I had for today to discuss, but happy to take any questions on this.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration on the, um, policy, uh, the brownfields and it, it's one click up. The public infrastructure, um, those make sense. The administration supports. Uh, we'll, we'll go back and we'll take a closer look at, at Luca 38. I, I would agree with, um, Councilwoman Harriet. It does sound like a tricky one. Um, and on the Galesville, um, Volunteer Fire Department, I think that one absolutely makes sense, uh, for a good hard look at, um, region planning, which is sort of our standard response here and, but it, it definitely does sound like a, a, a very good, um, uh, I've lost the word. Um, a very good, uh, uh, place where this could change. So I think we would prefer that it, um, stay the way staff recommended, but understand the, the intent of the sponsor here. Does seem like a good, a good one to look at hard.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hare. Um, and, um, Ms. Pickard. It is your turn. Guide us, Obi-Wan, however you want through your amendments.
Okay, I think, um, I have about, um, 14 amendments, um, that have all been shared. I, I, for Ms. Schultz, maybe if we start with the, the paragraph regarding region planning, which is page 68. I think it's dovetailed in with two of the administration's amendments. Um, we can talk about it briefly. The administration, it's hard to read here, but, um, we worked between their amendments. we worked between their amendments and this amendment, we've sort of reworked page sixty-eight of volume one regarding region planning. The intent is to focus those region plans a little bit and both let, you know, potential individuals know what, what the possibilities are in region planning. I'm happy to just read the new paragraph and if my phone would let me um um really quick to how it would read now. The content of each region plan will align with Plan twenty forty. The region plans will analyze existing conditions and trends in each of the major topic areas and establish goals. The region plans will also provide an opportunity to recognize the individual communities within the region and their uniqueness. Provide for additional stakeholder input, identify unique features within the communities that should be protected. Identify needs and refine the land use plan with particular focus on the targeted development, redevelopment and revitalization areas. So now this is the big chunk that's been added. Concept plans for these targeted growth and critical corridor areas will be developed to help shape the future vision for these areas. Using the results of the fiscal, of the fiscal impact analysis, additional land use alternatives will be assessed to consider the regional impacts from the COVID-nineteen pandemic, improve the balance between water resource limitations and focus forecasted housing and job growth while directing growth to occur within the targeted areas. During the region plan process, the need for additional implementation tools such as design guidelines, urban design standards, density adjustments, new zoning districts and form-based codes will be explored. In addition, an analysis of the region's data on workers per household will be conducted in order to make adjustments, adjustments that will achieve a more balanced county-wide ratio. And then it goes on um as the page does in, in volume one. And um I just, it's just, it's, I, I hope that the admin and I worked on this. So um it's just making a, a little more detailed description of all the possibilities. I think region planning is going to provide really cool opportunities for our, our nine regions to, to do a deep dive into how they really want to envision their communities over the next twenty to thirty years, but also talk about how we get there along the way. So I, I realize we're, we're, we're starting to get into the weeds of the, the words on the page and these two big volumes, but I do think it will um be a way for to encourage some people that may not um be as focused in our communities. Uh, we, there's some exciting things that can happen um through region planning. And I think um these words help us get there.
Ms. Picker, do you want to continue with just other amendments or are you, as we have been doing, to kind of group them together?
Sure. I didn't know if the admin wanted to say anything about that one.
Uh, just Pete Baron with the administration. Um, thank uh Councilwoman Picker for, for pushing this idea forward and, and working with us to, to get the language to something that achieves that goal.
So um, Madam Chair, I'm happy to move along. Uh, another amendment that probably needs some explanation is um the parcel seventy-four oh nine B and A land use map. And if Ms. Schultz would be so kind as to take a minute to pull up the map that we provided. So this is um, the big green, well, the blue outlined area on the bottom of the satellite map is seventy-four oh nine uh B and A Boulevard in Glen Burnie, just north of the Glen Burnie Town Center. It's actually nestled right between the Glen Burnie Town Center and Cromwell Station. Um, currently, this is, the underlying zoning of this parcel is R-five, but it is currently in a government industrial use and it has been sort of developed over time with a mishmash of um county um uses. There's a salvage yard there. There's a building that affronts the, the road at B and A. That's the old water sanitation um building and some other animal control, which also used to be. There's a lot of strange government buildings there. It's, it's, it is a parcel that the administration and I have been discussing uh to potentially uh redevelop, um which would take, could take many, many shapes. Um, you'll see that the green, it's about a thirty-two acre parcel, but only about thirteen point four acres is developed and developable uh based on the natural features there, floodplain, what, whatever. So it's that front parcel. It's the perfect place to encourage a really cool redevelopment project nestled right between the town center and Cromwell Light Rail. But it is, um, the land use map shows it as public use because that's what it is. It is in public use. It is owned by the county. Um, we could split hairs over this. Um, I'm looking to change the underlying land use to mixed use. Um, it is, mixed use is around that area. Um, if you look on the top map and certainly it's appropriate in or for redevelopment situation. To redevelop this par- parcel, it will have to be rezoned because it is currently R-five. So um it's sort of just a nod to the fact that moving forward as we envision this part of the county, we're looking to see that um become a mixed use situation. It's not really appropriate for R-five. Um, but um it will have to take a second step, which could happen with or without this land use change. But I'm choosing to see if my colleagues will support me in just changing the underlying land use. I don't know if the administration, we've gone back and forth about this, so um I, I think they support it. I don't know.
Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before you continue, can I just ask that you answer the question also of, can we do that? We're changing public land use to possible mixed use, which to me implies private, public, private, commercial, some kind of partnership or enterprise. So I'd like to know.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. That's a, a, an important question. And, and uh I'll, I'll take uh Councilwoman Picker's uh question or, or, or statement first. I think, uh, want to thank her. She has been a, a steadfast advocate for Glen Burnie revitalization. And, and this parcel is currently underused and could uh help um fight or help um, uh, fight uh, uh, inspire um seed uh, 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 some real positive change there. And so we went back and forth on this particular one and um looking at the impact of what this change would be and, and what's going on there now and, and what could be happening uh in the future. Um, this one makes some sense because of the public interest uh in, in seeing some change there. So uh to, to, the big question, the administration is comfortable with this amendment. The uh legal question, Madam Chair, I think is an important one. And I'm happy to, to turn it over to the attorneys if I get this incorrect. But this will have no impact on if the county decides to do nothing. And the, it doesn't make sense. We, we've looked at it. We decide, no, we're not going to go after this. The, it could still remain as a government use. Um, and, and maybe uh Mr. Swain or Ms. Kenny want to expand a little bit more on um how Title eighteen impacts uh county government. Well, I see Mrs. Klosmeyer here too. If you want to jump in too. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
Uh, I think I'll defer this to uh Ms. Kenny. This is Greg Swain, County Attorney.
Sure, Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Um, I, I think the question is that what, how the county, county code applies to um development that is undertaken by the, the county for a county purpose. And the answer to that question would be that in general, um, the county code does not apply to those, to those development projects. Is that, is that what the question was, Mr. Baron? Okay, thank you.
I think so. I, I, if Ms. Lacy thinks I, I didn't, I restated her question incorrectly, jump in.
Madam.
Enough.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I do understand, I do understand Madam Chair's question. I do. And I think it I don't, I don't think the, if all of us came forward with a, a land use change of other public currently, parcels currently in public use, um, that it would make sense to do that, correct? Like, we're not gonna, doesn't make sense to change the underlying land use under, you know, at the Arundel Center. Um, and, and I think there's still debate on because this parcel, if, if we decide to move forward as, uh, the administration decides to move forward to do something in a redevelopment um as an RFP or however, or surplus it or, or something down the road, as I'm hoping, it still has to, would have to be rezoned. So this land use change, I guess it is somewhat superficial. Because it does have to be rezoned, but it will, I'm hoping, spark a debate within the region planning in Glen, in Region uh Three regarding this opportunity and, and put some. Of course, I also hope that we're coming back for a text amendment to rezone it before Region Three is up for debate. But um, because I, I am keen, I think this parcel is ripe for redevelopment and could be a very cool catalyst to really spark redevelopment in the Glen Burnie Town Center area. So I know that different folks in planning and zoning might have different thoughts on if this is the right path to take. So I, but I do understand Ms. Lacy's question um very much.
Ms. Stewart.
I just wanted to add that I think that what uh Councilmember Pickered is saying is right because if the county decides to surplus the land and the underlying use map says it's mixed use as opposed to whatever it is right now, R-five or whatever it may be, it makes it easier to get a rezoning with that kind of land use on the map than it would if it's something else. So I mean, it would be much easier to get a rezoning to mixed use, for example, if that's what the purchaser wants, then it would be if it stays as it is. So that's it. Thank you.
You hit the nail on the head, Ms. Stewart. Thank you.
Sarah Lacey, District One. So let me just interject then. Uh, it kind of makes me think about maybe going back and looking at some of the um TOD overlays or designations that I have. I'm thinking of one on Dorsey Road specifically that would be near the Mark Dorsey Station. So the way, um, the way that's currently drawn on the map, it's drawn around um a, a parcel that has a county building on it. It's an old county building. And the uh Waka West Arundel Center for the Arts is there. They leased the building from the county. Um, but if I were gonna designate transit-oriented development there, I wondered why we wouldn't include it. So now I'm just looking at these two situations and thinking, are, is there a guiding principle or, or not? Um, you know, or is there, that's just something that is a level of detail we really can't feasibly get into at this, at this point, at this stage. It's a thought. Ms. Picker, do you want us to uh discuss any other of your potential proposed amendments?
Um, Alison Picker D two. Um. Oh goodness. Um. I'm trying to think if there are any specifically um that I we can, if we, if talk about um let me find it. The Ms. Schultz, um, policy BE thirteen point three, where I am, this amendment is adding three new strategies, C, D, and E, if you want to pull that up. Um, the main focus of this amendment is, again, as I'm gonna get named the queen of redevelopment here. Um, I really am focused on redevelopment and, and lots of Plan twenty forty um highlights. And, you know, achieve, uh, attempts to, or, or talks about achieving a lot of our goals through redevelopment. So I'm really interested in um putting our money where our mouth is and creating a redevelopment advisory group composed of county agencies, private sector experts, um, you know, economic development. Um, that's strategy C that's being added. Uh, strategy D, which is new, is to retain an independent consultant to evaluate or perform a development capacity analysis. And three, the last one, strategy E, create a new section within the Office of Planning and Zoning um dedicated to the review of redevelopment projects. And my thought on all of this is truly just to um really utilize our internal and external resources to achieve our, our redevelopment goals. Um, redevelopment is, you know, Anarod County has been developing for the last fifty, sixty years primarily through greenfield development. And we, this Plan twenty forty really wants us to turn that ship um for many, many reasons. Both environmental stewardship, you know, the, the lack of, of, you know, good land for development, but also we have old critical economic corridors that um we also want to make sure thrive through the next thirty years. So I'm really keen on making sure the administration and all of our partners um get, get working on how best to achieve those redevelopment goals because it, it is very different. Um, all these commercial areas um where we want to see cool things happen are, you know, those buildings are owned by somebody. So the first step is incentivizing it. Uh, the market forces that are involved is, it's, it's complicated and it can be more challenging. But um, so I'm just wanting to put some strategies in this plan that, that get us there. All, all for a um positive outcome.
Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Um, we, we support and appreciate uh the councilmen uh taking a couple of language suggestions. Um, this, this will, to put this into practice, this will take resources and, and staff time. And um if this is something the council really does want to see, there will have to be uh corresponding um, uh, putting our money where our mouth is. Um, and so Mr. Kai Ziegler, you, you have your hand up if you, anything you want to add to that.
Very quickly, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. I do agree with um Mr. Baron's portrayal. We do support the idea. Um, one very small suggestion is that when we talk about creating the group, whatever it would be, we use the term section just because that's the, the nomenclature we use in OPZ when we, when we um have a work group.
I got included, sir.
Pardon?
Yeah, I got included.
Okay, sorry. And so, um, but in general, uh, we'd love to be able to create a section like this, but there, there is going to be some um fiscal realities in um, you know, kind of building a bigger bus in order to do this level of work. But I, we agree it's important.
I want to know if it's gonna be a bus with the uh accordion, you know, coming along behind. Um, did you? Did you have a response, Ms. Pickard, or else I'm going to Ms. Fiedler?
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry. I so I know from my lengthy conversations with our esteemed colleagues at the Office of Planning and Zoning that we have been hiring new planners and, um, so while my intent wasn't necessarily, um, additional staff, I know, you know, we we could definitely invest in in county government in lots of departments, and I'm not saying that you don't, the Office of Planning and Zoning doesn't need additional staff, but at the same time, I've also keep hearing about all the cool, uh, planners that have been hired and all, they have great resumes and experience and getting them together in a group, um, that focuses on, um, redevelopment, lessons learned, lessons from outside the the county, I think, could 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 need additional resources, but doesn't necessarily have to have it. That's just my opinion, since I've have all those many years of running a planning and zoning department.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I'm just gonna add to the ongoing conversation. Um, when I read the word section, um, that term confused me, so I appreciate Mr. Kai Ziegler, um, expressing that that is a term used in the department. Um, I thought maybe it would be more appropriate to use the word division, but then hearing the word, the the thoughts from the sponsor, uh, Councilwoman Pickard that it's not intended to necessarily add additional staff. Perhaps this is an ongoing conversation, what exactly, um, this amendment is geared towards, because in theory, I like the idea. Um, I just want to make sure we nail out the details of section division and staff versus increased staff and not not increased staff and all that fun stuff, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's a strategy in a document that's got has hundreds and hundreds of strategies, so with my, putting my redevelopment here on, it's just something that's important to me. We'll we'll see if it we'll see if any of it happens.
Okay, well, this is the chair and I have a brilliant idea. OPZ can take all of its most brilliant creative people, call it a think tank, put them in a room surrounded with whiteboards and tell them they can't leave until they come up with their best ideas, because that's how we got to the moon, that's how we're getting to Mars, that's what we should do. So, there you go, the big close. Do you have, um, other amendments that you'd like us to discuss? I know I'm curious about your forest conservation amendments and commercial PUDs and
the Allison, this is Allison Pickard, District Two. The commercial PUD is just another implementation tool that's added to a a list of other implementation tools. Um, I don't know that it warrants a ton of discussion. Um, the we can talk about for Ms. Schultz's convenience, the policy NE four dot two impervious surface if we choose.
Madam Chair. Oh, she's.
Yes.
I would be interested in that because I I think there might be a little bit of, um, it well, overlap or and or conflict between, um, one of the amendments that I have, uh, being drafted right now.
Well, that's what I was wondering, so.
Okay, so this amendment, um, you know, in other aspects of the plan, it it really is just it's just, it's taking some very specific, um, language and and broadening a little bit for further study and review. And also bringing in the concept of creating incentives, um, like parking, um, requirements, you know, per different uses. Looking at the landscape manual review, uh, it's basically just a broader strategy statements, less specific, um, similar to other things that that other amendments that I've brought forward.
Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Um, uh, we've been looking at this one, uh, closely. Don't I don't think we, um, are are there on it yet. I think there's some, um, more clarification we might need, so I'm gonna ask Matt Johnston to ask or 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 make a couple of comments or or Ms. Rhodes on on this. This is, this is a policy statement in in the document, so it's not a a huge, huge, uh, thing. I'm not taking my shoe off and pounding it on the table as they say, but I I don't think we're there on this one.
I'm sure. So thank you, Mr. Baron. For the record, Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director. Um, so I'm looking at the, just so that I have the right one in front of me. This is, um, the amendment that changes four to A and B, is that correct, uh, Councilwoman Pickard?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, very much thank you for the amendment and understand the, uh, the purpose here. Uh, the administration's always supportive of more information as we review policies for how to promote, um, redevelopment and reduction of impervious surface and just more information in general. Um, all of our text amendments that are proposed or suggested in this guiding document are gonna require a lot of analysis, so we really appreciate that approach in this and other amendments. Um, one of the, one of the the things here that I just wanted to point out was that this was a priority by the Citizens Environmental Commission, who is advisory to the county executive. Um, one of their priorities was, for the first time, establishing impervious surface limits for each of our um, zoning districts. And as I read the amendment, it simply suggests review the development and redevelopment policies governing impervious surface limits in each zoning district. So again, I think that we can get there. Um, this is a reasonable, uh, uh, approach to review before we do a text amendment.
Ms. Robbin.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair.
I was wondering whether you you have a comment about how this relates to your amendment on impervious surfaces.
I think maybe, um, you know, we're, um, Councilwoman Pickard's, um, amendment, you know, like she said, is more broad. My amendment is very specific in terms of, um, the a particular incentive in terms of, um, adjusting stormwater fees. Presumably, if stormwater fees increase, then, um, you're encouraging, uh, property owners to find ways to decrease their impervious surface.
Okay. Uh, yes, Ms. Pickard.
Allison Pickard D two. So I haven't is that, is that a strategy that you're editing or adding to this exact, um, this policy, or is that somewhere else in the plan?
I believe it is the same one.
Okay.
I'm not good with remembering these numbers, but I believe it's the same one.
May I chime in? This is Kaylee Schultz from, uh, the Assistant Administrative Officer. It actually, uh, Ms. Robbin's amendment would add a new policy and not clash specifically with the exact same section as Ms. Pickard's amendment. I am happy to share, Ms. Robbin, if you like, I'm happy to share your draft on the screen, as is knowing that you have not had to finalize it yet, if you would like.
That would be fine.
Okay, do we want to move on to another amendment?
Am I, Allison Pickard, am I still in the hot seat, Madam Chair?
You are.
Okay.
Did I misunderstand? I thought Ms. Schultz was, um, sharing the draft of the relevant amendment that I'm presenting.
I'm sorry.
Here it comes.
And beg your pardon. Wanting to eat my popcorn while you two ladies figure out whether these amendments go together or not.
Madam Chair, this is Allison Pickard. This is just a new, this is a new policy under NE four. So I I think they can coexist perfectly fine.
I feel like they can coexist. It's maybe just suggesting or, um, adding to the plan one specific, um, incentive. Whereas, uh, Councilwoman Pickard's amendment suggests more broadly. I'd be curious to hear, I know you're seeing that folks are seeing this for the first time right now. But if anyone has any other input about whether or not you think these could coexist. Uh, Madam Chair, Ms. Robbin and Ms. Pickard, uh, this is Laura Corby, the, um, Administrative Officer. I do want to point out, we have not done a final reconciliation of all the amendments that will be, um, perhaps offered on April the nineteenth. Uh, one of the, you know, before we actually get to the meeting on April nineteenth, we will look at all the amendments, we will do any reconciliations to ensure there are no crossovers, that, you know, nothing is canceling another one out, that type of thing. We just haven't gotten to that point yet.
Madam Secretary, that is an excellent point, well taken, as always. And your cat is very cute. I have a question about one of your amendments, Ms. Pickard. Which maybe if I read the part of the plan where it goes, I'd understand, but, um, it's your amendment that would evaluate the potential of bubble permits, nutrient trading and rebalancing of allocations between sewer sectors?
Sure, um, so, um, and I'm not an expert in this, but it's just an opportunity for, really, it's DPW to look at our different, um, and I don't, I have, do not profess to be, um, an expert in this arena, but as we look at our, um, wastewater, water plants, substations, there are different tools. I've been told maybe that they are state and federal tools and we may or may not be able to initiate them via the county, but, um, it's just a way to balance out, uh, our, um, oh, I'm not prepared to talk about this right now, um, our TMDL across our different pumping stations. Thanks, maybe DPW can answer this question.
Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we will have DPW, a DPW rep at the full council meeting on the nineteenth. But I think one thing to be clear here is there is some concern about whether we would be able to do this or not. But this amendment says evaluate. This is definitely worth digging into and and taking a look at, so we're very comfortable with evaluating it. We might evaluate it and say no, we're preempted because of the state rule or a federal rule, um, but it is, it's a worthy idea to to look into. So we we were com- we're comfortable with it. And actually, uh, it looks like Chris Phipps is hung around in the meeting, so, um, our lucky day.
Well, I I I want to give credit where credit due and my very, very well, um, first legislative aide is texting me saying it's about capacity, where where stations can expand, uh, and for future growth, so. Sorry, it's been a long couple of weeks with the GDP, but I'd love to hear from Mr. Phipps.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Phipps.
Hi. Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, and not, I don't want to get too wonky about this, but it's it, what it relates to is the capacity at our waste, at our water reclamation facilities, so that our treatment plants, um, not pump stations. And it's a, it's a nutrient capacity, so we can engineer hydraulic expansions, no problem to accommodate future growth, but we can't, um, increase our nitrogen and phosphorus caps that have been established at these plants. And the only way to do that, one way, I'm not the only way, but there's several ways. One could be trading across plants where you have maybe a little excess, uh, capa- nitrogen phosphorus capacity and trade it with another plant that doesn't, that has maybe more growth potential. And that's the kind of bubble permit you're talking about. So what that would really require is MDE to allow such a such a type of trading across service areas, because the other thing they they are looking at is, um, even though a property that we may be connecting to, say, the, um, Cox Creek Water Reclamation Facility Service Area, it may actually drain to the Broadneck, uh, River, I mean, Broadneck, the Magathie River, the Broadneck area, so um, you got, it's it's kind of three-dimensional chess that way where you can't trade across, um, wastewater permits, but then not be consistent with the, um, watershed permit. So it is a complicated, um, issue, and it's one that I think would would really require a lot more uh, evaluation, investigation, and obviously involvement from, uh, and really approval through MDE. I hope that helps.
You you saved me, Mr. Phipps.
That was very helpful. Thank you very much. Ms. Pickard, it's it's still on you. Is there anything else that of your amendments? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fiedler, your flag.
Yeah, sorry, I wanted, um, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I wanted to, um, bend Mr. Phipps' ear while he's still here, so what I think I hear you saying is that in theory, this could potentially be a good idea, but it's multi-layered and complicated to implement. Did I summarize that?
Well, I I don't even know if in theory it can be done. I think that's something we'd need to get MDE to weigh in on, because I, you know, I think we need that first. And then, yes, there's going to be a lot of implementation details that would have to follow to actually make it work, provided MDE were comfortable that the approach would work.
Okay, and just a follow-up question to that. When you were talking about the caps and shifting from one facility to another, are these physical caps that can move from space to space, or is it the flip of the switch? How does that work?
Well, it would be, uh, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, um, it would be implemented through a a change to the permit. So it's kind of a, it's a documentation change, um, not necessarily an infrastructure change. Now, we'd have to know that, you know, we as the, um, you know, operators of these facilities know that we have the ability to meet, you know, um, whatever shift is being proposed, um, that we have the technology and the, you know, performance at that plant to accommodate um, and increase in nitrogen load and associated with the cap. We lift the cap in the permit.
Got it, understood. Mr. Phipps, your expertise in engineering is always appreciated.
Madam Chair, Allison Pickard D two.
Yes.
I just want to, you know, this is, um, the strategy just says to evaluate, uh, the potential for. So it's something that, uh, folks in the private sector have brought to my attention as something that could be, uh, useful in the county as we continue to grow. But it it's, it's just a strategy.
Any other comments or questions on on this, or I should perhaps say generally, if you're if you're done, Ms. Pickard?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Right, so anything else that we need to discuss? We have four council members, so I think that's probably enough to discuss, um, ways to bundle amendments for Monday night. My initial thinking on that is that we would, uh, go by, I've kind of laid out six categories, so there would be Lucas, category number one, and then within Lucas, we would go by council member. And then we would move on to, say, SRS, go by council member. Any other land change, land use changes, go by council member, and then go to policies and try to group the policies, either, you know, if we can group them by type, at least so we can talk about similar topics in a continuous kind of conversation, but it may be impossible to bundle any of those kinds of amendments, just based on what they are, which is fine, so long as we've bundled some land use changes. Otherwise, it will be impossible for us to get through everything. So I would love for, um if there's any feedback on, on those ideas, jump in. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This is a question for Office of Law. I had thought that I heard at some point that we cannot bundle amendments to the GDP. Is that not accurate? I didn't mean to stump anybody.
Lori Blair Klesma, Deputy County Attorney. I am not aware of that, but we can certainly take a look and see if there is some reason why that would not be permitted.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, just a follow-up question, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. If individual council members were interested in not bundling certain amendments, would the folks that are here be open to that? I wanna make sure that there's flexibility.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Pickard.
Yeah, Allison Pickard, D two. So I will, I, I will I'll look at my amendments to see which, if there's any policy ones that make sense to bundle, but I am concerned that you know, one might get a positive vote and another one wouldn't, and so I don't want to lose on that bundling of votes. But maybe each of us need to look at our own amendments to see if some make sense, especially policy ones, and some don't. That's what I would prefer. We have to vote to bundle, so that adds time to, um you know, saying, oh, pol- you know, amendment two, five, and seven could make sense, and I feel good about bundling them, but you kind of have to get the votes to bundle them to go forward, so it is a little tricky. Um, that's sort of my thoughts on it. I guess as a sponsor of amendments, I'd kind of like to be able to make the motion to choose to bundle things that I think are appropriate or not. That would be my preference.
Okay, this is the chair. I am gonna call on, on other folks, but I wanna interject that everyone needs to understand, we cannot get through all these amendments on Monday night unless we bundle them. We have too many. We don't have enough time. We can't start earlier, to my chagrin, because I thought we could, but we can't because of how early, at the time, the notice was already given, so we cannot start sooner than six o'clock. Luckily, we don't have to vote on anything else on our agenda, but we do not know, and, and we will not know until the day of the meeting, how many people are signed up to speak on the GDP either, so we have to be prepared for a lengthy public comment period. Um and factoring those two things together, I'm, I'm determined to find a way. Um so that's, that's what I'm pushing forward. I think Ms. Pompous had her hand up the longest, and then Ms. Robbin and Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um I have a suggestion in relation to the LUCA's. I totally agree with you that on Monday evening, the LUCA should be taken by council district. But the other thing is, the LUCA numbering was developed based on when the application arrived in the Office of Planning and Zoning, not by geographic area. So I think it would be helpful to take them in geographic clumps together. So for instance, they're a number in Jessup. They should go together, even though they're not numbered sequentially. Thank you. And I could make some suggestions to the staff if they would like us to do that.
I think that's very uh smart, and we should definitely coordinate that so that we keep the numbering as straightforward as possible. Um, Ms., where'd you go? Where'd Ms. Robbin go? There you are. Go ahead, Ms. Robbin.
Here. Um I, this might be an obvious suggestion, but I think maybe to the extent possible, um we should be, you know, kind of trying to figure out where we land on each of these amendments, um ask our questions ahead of time um to help us expedite the voting process on Monday.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I just wanna add um that I, we also just need to consider the timing of the amendments and what impacts one amendment has on another when we um consider bundling, more for staff purposes.
This is the chair. I totally agree with you, and I think um Ms. Corby will be instrumental in helping us catch that. Um my hope would be that by whatever ends up being the deadline for numbering amendments, that we could, you, we have maybe an agreement of the, oh, just an overall structure and that, you know, knowing that not everyone will necessarily support um a motion to vote on certain things as a, as a block, but I think as to land use changes, and if we keep them in more geographical chunks by, by council member, that'll be, they'll certainly be easier, knowing that also each time we do that, everyone will still have a chance to, you know, to weigh in and say, hey, I like this, I don't like that, I have this final question, whatever, those, those chances aren't going away. But I do think, um before we can number even according to that structure, we need to have an understanding for sure of whether or not, uh when there is a block, does a council member have to vote yea or nay to the entire block, or can they say, you know, my, I'm yea as to all except number four, or something like that?
Ms. Lacy, may I ask if we um pause this for a moment to allow the law office to weigh in here legally speaking? My concern is that we, we need to have a, a legal understanding whether this can or cannot happen. I, I don't, I just would feel more comfortable assisting the council um if we can have an opinion about this underlying matter before we begin talking about numbering and order and all that fun stuff.
Certainly.
Would that make sense?
Of course.
Um I know we, we, we block amendments for the annual, for the ABAO. Uh but as Ms. Blair has pointed out in the past, that bill actually comes from a different portion of state law versus regular legislation. So I wanna make certain that you guys are proceeding in the right fashion here, and that you're not setting yourselves up for some sort of problem down the road. And again, I think that requires some good legal advice from our kind attorneys in the law office.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Swain, please.
Thank you, Greg Swain, County Attorney. That's gonna take more than just a couple of minutes to put that together. So we're gonna need a few minutes to research that fully.
Understood, sir. Does anyone have any other comment or question for our work session, any other business to discuss? It's looking like none. We're close to the end of this process, everybody. Well, we will get there. That's what, that's the goal. Okay. Great, well, um unless we see you all before.